Good morning, everyone. I'm looking for Pastor Carrie Dean. Come on up. You're here to present the invocation? Just, thank you. Go ahead.
Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we come before you and I just, I just want to start with thankfulness. Lord, thank you for men and women that are willing to serve our county and the people of our county. Thank you for their willingness to give their time and their energy and, and just devote themselves to this place and the people of this place. And inside of that Thanksgiving, Lord, I just pray for wisdom. Well, I pray it would be a wisdom that could only be attributed to you and you alone. Or that it would be first, pure, above all things. And there would be a peaceableness and a gentleness about your wisdom that is given. Or I pray that there would be wisdom inside of this room for every person that is here, that there would be a sense and an openness to reason and that there would be a fullness of mercy. And Lord, that you would bear forth good fruit in ever, in whatever is said and done in this place today. Lord, thank you that inside of you is an impartiality and sincerity, that we can come before you and ask for a wisdom that truly is pure in all ways. So, Lord, we come before you and, Lord, I pray that you would guide the thoughts and, Lord, that you would edit the words and, Lord, that you would govern the decisions. We love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Pastor Carrie is with First Baptist Church of Merritt Island. All right, with that, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, July 19th Board of County Commission meeting. And I'll call this meeting to order. Commissioner Pritchett?
Join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to minutes. Commission?
Motion to approve, ma'am.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolutions. That would be Commissioner Smith first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrea Young. Welcome. Stand at the podium and I will read the resolution and then we'll give you the floor. Whereas amateur radio operations are celebrating over a century of the miracle of human voice broadcast over the airwaves. And whereas the amateur radio station becomes a critical communication link in the event of a disaster and volunteer radio operators provide situational awareness to emergency managers during and after a disaster. And whereas amateur radio operators have demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communication for positive community and charitable events throughout Brevard County and surrounding counties. And whereas Brevard County recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these amateur radio operators who also serve as weather spotters in the SkyWarm program of the U.S. National Weather Service. And whereas the American Relay League is the largest organization for amateur radio in the United States. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, do hereby proclaim July 19th, 2022, in Brevard County in honor of and recognition of our amateur radio operators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of July, 2022. Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Lord, yours.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. We are very honored to be here today. Thank you for this resolution. Thank you for the acknowledgement of all of the ham radio oper- amateur ham radio operators that go up in the, in the storm when everyone else is, is getting out of town. These men and women are going to the shelters. They're, they're going out to wherever the, wherever, whatever type of disaster is happening at the time. We are very honored to be here today and we thank you very much for your recognition.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have two people up here for the photo. Donald will come up for the picture.
All right.
Commissioner Smith?
We have one more. Donna Bolton and Susan Kowalski. And company.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brought my whole crew.
Yeah, I see that. Good for you. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Again, I'm going to read this and then we'll turn the floor over to you.
Sure. Thank you.
Whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system and whereas community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising offenders in the community. And whereas community corrections professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders. And whereas community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups. And whereas these professionals provide services, support, protection for the victims. And whereas community corrections professionals advocate community and restorative justice. And whereas these professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of July 17th through 23, 2022, as pre-trial, probation, and parole supervision week. Clients, employees, and communities powers through partnerships. And encourage all citizens to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of July, 2022. Madam Chair, I propose that we accept this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. 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 Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smith and Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Samantha Eastman. I also want to say thank you on behalf of Rachel Richardson, who's our circuit administrator, who wasn't able to be here today. But I do want to also put a shout out to all of our community partners. These are all Department of Corrections employees who I want you guys all to meet in, in one second. But there's also county probation, pre-trial, our reentry partners, and federal probation. So I wanted to give them a shout out as well. And we are all one big team here in Brevard County. We're going to go from my right to left and we're going to start with Supervisor. Reticator?
Director Natasha Crannus.
Correctional Probation Officer Senior Officer Kayla Kelly. Correctional Probation Officer Amy Belief.
Correctional Probation Officer Ashley Martin.
Correctional Probation Officer Nicola Booth.
Correctional Probation Officer Kayla Meadows.
Correctional Probation Officer Susan Price.
Correctional Probation Senior Officer Tanisha Anderson.
Correctional Probation Senior Officer Gloria Edwards.
Correctional Probation Officer Matthew Latta.
Correctional Probation Officer Don Bolden.
Correctional Probation CEO Office of Vacant.
Correctional Probation Officer Don Scarlett.
Thank you, guys, for, these guys are the heart of the Department of Corrections. They supervise over 5,000 felony probationers within our county. They do an amazing job. We couldn't do it without them. Our staff play an integral role in this county. We work with multiple partners, including a lot of reentry efforts as well. And I am very proud of them and very happy to have them around me today. This is a phenomenal agency. We do great work, great community work. And again, I want to thank you all as well and thank my staff and our staff for all the work that they do. Thank you, guys, for recognizing us, our commitment and our dedication to this county. It's very, very, very important and it means a lot to us. We keep your, our resolutions on each, each of our offices, on our walls, and we see them every day. So I just want to say thank you to all of you for our, this dedication and the commitment that you see in us for this community. Thank you.
And we thank you for, you work behind the scenes to help these folks and keep us all safe.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to get a picture. Yay! Yes, yes. Squeeze right here at the podium? Okay, come this way. We're getting close and personal. Come here, let me hug you. Let me love on you. You can get us? Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Let me squeeze that.
Yes, sir.
Can you see him? Okay. You can't see him. He can't see you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Have a good day. You too, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have people here that are representing infant nutrition? Wonderful. Hi, thank you for being here this morning. I'm going to read this and then you have some time to educate us as well. Whereas infant nutrition is a public health issue and critically important during natural disasters and emergency situation. And breastfeeding provides the safest, most reliable, and renewable food source during such times. And whereas breastfeeding has proven a primary prevention strategy, protecting both the infants and the mothers from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions, and building a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. Whereas the surgeon general's call to action to support breastfeeding calls on healthcare providers, employers, insurers, policymakers, researchers, and the community at large to support mothers in reaching their personal breastfeeding goals. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Ma'am?
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Jamie Lewis. I am the Nutrition Program Director for the WIC program in Brevard County. And I'm here today with Cara Toledo, who is our WIC coordinator. We are reminded during this time, when we are experiencing a national baby formula shortage, how valuable and invaluable breastfeeding is. And we appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of your support and effort to support the breastfeeding mission. So there's a lot of, you know, doctors' community support with breastfeeding in our community. And I just want to recognize all of those partners that are, to support our moms, our infants, and, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Well, let's move on to consent first, after consent. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull F5, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a card for F1. Anybody want anything else pulled? All right, can I get a motion to approve consent minus items F1 and F5? Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, can we speak, have staff speak a little bit on item F1?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item F1 is a resolution that's required as part of our grant application for up to $2.3 million of state cost share for our restoration projects. There's a five-year constru- or funding request table. This is just for fiscal year 2324, for construction in the South Beaches and continued monitoring in the mid and north and south reach.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. And of course, we love our beaches and the sand re-nourishment aspect is so important. But there is an area that I would request a modification for the mid-reach area. The, that area is, has historically, for 7.6 miles, has been restricted from sand re-nourishment, only dune re-nourishment because of the sensitivity of the nearshore reef. This is a very, they say in this abstract from the BOEM report, "A very cautious approach to the nourishment projects which may impinge on rocky, outcrop areas is suggested." The mid-reach, a 7.6 mile stretch through Satellite Beach, wasn't restored historically because of environmental concerns. That portion of coast has hard rocky bottom designated by state and federal fish and wildlife agencies as an essential fish habitat. When it comes to these living reefs, not rocks, they're significant to the Indian River Lagoon. They protect sea turtle fishes. They're hatchery for pompano, one of the significant recreational and commercial fish of our nation, along with snook, tarpon, black drum, and redfish. What concerns me when I go back on records is that in a report from our Natural Resources Director, she said she would address rock reef impediments through evaluating options and selecting a preferred alternative for the Satellite Beach area, AKA, address rock reef impediments which are protected by federal and state laws. In other words, finding a loophole to circumvent those laws, which is exactly what was done. An artificial reef was put approximately six, sorry, 12 miles south. This is what the natural reef looks like. This is what the artificial reef looks like. This was not even put in the same zone. This is, this is not the nearshore. This is intermediate. The, the documents say that if this fails to perform, that no more sand re-nourishment will be done in this area. This is the third year monitoring. There, this does not look like this with the macroalgae. The reason we are the, the largest, Brevard is the largest sea turtle nesting area in the world, is because of these reefs and because, as a food source and shelter. We're 50% of greens. When you look at the report that you are approving, the mid-reach is getting much higher amounts of sand. This is what it looked like when we last had it in 2020, which I came up here. I've been coming to these meetings for four years and vehemently said this should not be done. The BOEM, BOEM report by Corps of Engineers says it impacts sea turtles for three years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia?
The, the federal project to build and maintain the dunes along that shoreline with very narrow beach is in order to minimize the impact to those rock reefs that are essential fish habitat. The project design went through full NEPA coordination with all the federal agencies. Part of this funding request is continued monitoring of the performance of those reefs. Everything is in compliance with the permit conditions. We restored, well, we, we built five acres of reef in order to mitigate for up to three acres or 3.1 acres of potential habitat. The reason why we mitigated at a higher than a one-to-one ratio is because when you, you know, create a man-made mitigation system, it's, it's never expected to perform at 100% the same as the, the natural system that was impacted. And so the, the way that the agencies deal with that for any kind of development that has environmental impacts is by, you know, mitigating at a greater than a one-to-one ratio. So we've, we've done that and the system continues to perform in compliance with the permits.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for approval, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobias, item F5?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With your indulgence, can we let Mr. Crannus introduce it real bri- briefly?
Sure.
F5 is nine sports grants for our cycle one of next year in the amount of $94,252.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few questions. I may cut it off because I think Peter's going to get repetitive on this one, but I want to give him at least the opportunity to do that. In regards to the Cocoa Beach Half Marathon, was this approved by the TDC?
Yes, sir.
Is this a one-year grant?
Yes, these are one-year grants.
Okay. Is this grant paid prior or is this reimbursable?
All these grants are reimbursable.
He's trying to cut me off at the pass here. I want to do a couple more of these so we can pick up a pattern here. Little foreshadowing, if you will. Space Coast Soccer Tournament, was this approved by the TDC?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this a one-year or a 30-year grant?
One-year grant.
Thank you. Is this grant, I'm sorry, I don't know where that came from. Is this grant prior to or reimbursable?
Reimbursable.
Okay, I'm going to pick one more at random and, how about the, I don't even know what this stands for. ACS Gateway to Space Race. That one sounds kind of cool. Was this grant approved by the TDC?
Yes, sir.
Is this a one-year grant?
Oh, yes.
And is this grant paid prior to or is it reimbursable?
Reimbursable.
Madam Chair, I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Crannus answering all these questions. I still have to vote no. I was, but I do appreciate the fact that these are only one-year grants. They are reimbursable and they did get unanimous approval. Is that fair to say for all of them here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll undertake a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Smith for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes 3-1. All right. No more items on consent to address. Moving on to public comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In view of the fact we have so many cards, I would like to make a motion that we change the limit of time to two minutes.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Smith for a two-minute time limit, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Tobias?
Madam Chair, how many, how many cards do we have and, and for which item?
Well, we have four public comment. Do you want me to go through them all?
Yeah, which, whatever one has the most.
Well, we have four public comment cards, seven for an item H, might as well do them all. Two for item J3, two for item J6, and 29 for item I1.
So we have well over 30?
Okay, so the real one is 20, whatever the one that has 29? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And which one is that one?
I1.
I1. Okay, so it's 29, so it's like a million dollars a card, is that correct?
You're so funny.
I kind of think we should give them the full time if we're talking a million dollars a card. But just my opinion. I may go down on this one.
All right. In the interest of time, I'll support that only because I, I don't want everybody to be stuck in this room for six hours. And we've done that in the past for less cards. So all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-1. All right, Mr. Clint Wilson?
Thank you. I would just like to inform-
Can you state your name, please?
I'm Clint Wilson with RDI Aquatics. Here in Cocoa. Been trying to get money from SORL to start a program aerating our canals because our canals are man-made. Going to take a man-made solution to correct them. And I have fought tooth and nail to hear a bunch of gibberish that somebody like me doesn't care for. And this is just a notice to let y'all know I've made a video that I will be getting out to the citizens of the county. Because the black tape that y'all got getting into all this mess, the hoops everybody's got to jump through to get money from SORL, we're talking half a billion dollars that y'all already collected through SORL. And most of it is going to infrastructure. I don't agree with it, not at all. Some infrastructure fine, but half a billion, and we got no more projects going on with the river than we have now. the river than we have now. My video is just my opinion that I'm putting out to 600,000 people that live in this county. I tend to make sure that everybody sees it. So, when y'all see the video or y'all see an email from RDI, I don't want nobody to say they were blindsided. I want everybody to be able to see the video because next week it'll be coming out on my website, QR codes and everything else. So, it's just, I'm trying to get something done on the river. Say the money spent, no matter who I talk to, the money's gone. We're spending it all on the river. Now, you're standing on waste treatment plants, sewer connections, retention ponds, media that throw in the retention ponds, and it's just not proper. Everybody kind of seems that I talked to, regular people out here, deceived, thought the money was going to the river. If I talk to SORL, it's going to the river by means of a sewer drain or a waste treatment plant. I don't agree with it and I just want to let y'all know, there is a video coming out. I will be sending y'all an email so y'all can look at it. And just don't want nobody to say they were blindsided. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Herman?
I am Marcus Herman. I am a 50-plus-year resident of Merritt Island. I'm a business owner and I am currently the chairman of the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency, better known as MYRA. About a week ago, I sent all of you an email expressing my concerns and thoughts about the lack of representation for District 2. I'm here today because I thought I should make my comments public and I should also let you see the face upon the request. In my email, I stated that I believed you should consider putting on hold all policies and ordinances specific to District 2, unless, of course, those issues were related to safety or health of its constituents. I'd like to clarify my position a little bit. If this board is going to vote a no change on an item in District 2, I see no reason to hold up that. It's not going to make a difference in how things have currently been operating District 2. But if this vote, if the vote's going to be a yes and it can't have an adverse effect on District 2, I would respectfully request that the commission table said vote until District 2 has a proper representation. I think this should be done on any given subject that may come before the board for the next few months until there's a District 2 commissioner in place. I want to be clear that this is not an effort to hold up any one project or agenda item. It's more to create a fair and balanced representation for the constituents of District 2. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. And so, what I'd like to talk about today is health and safety. And of course, we have fire and police and that's great, but it's come to my attention that we have for the Grand Canal Project under the Save Our Lagoon, we have, I'm told, have the third subcontractor has been let go. I've been told that there is no subcontractor currently doing interstellar treatment on that site. And that is contrary to the statements that were made by, by the natural resources director at the Save the Lagoon meeting. And I was told that by the contractor that is being solicited to perform said services. The issue with this site is that it is known contamination there. There is P A Hs, which are petrol, arsenic, which is a Class 8 carcinogen, copper, which is a biocide, and the most concerning of all is PFOS. Where are we taking these chemicals? We're taking the muck and we're not doing sufficient testing because I looked it up on Oculus for the state. We did 17 tests, only 17 tests last year. I contacted, I have not had a response acceptable from the county or the state on this issue. Now I hear there's no testing going on since March. This is when I came before this board and I said, put forth the conflicts of letter, conflicts of interest letter from 19 entities when, when there was no audit, when all these other concerns, when I was being told you can't have public records until after we take a vote, which violated sunshine. Well, all these things were going on. That was when that contractor was fired from the site. So, how are we amending that material going out to know how much sand it should be amended with? And we are putting lives at risk with this PFOS chemicals because this is just south of our drinking water source. Thank you.
Jenna Scott?
I'm assuming this is public comment, the first section of public comment. So, I wanted, as a former elected official, a mayor of Cocoa Beach, I would like to bring to the attention of all the elected officials in Brevard County. After the campaigns and public events and one gets elected, it's very flattering. You hear from people you never heard from before. You get to, to go to the monthly Florida League of Cities wine and dine. Boy, that is really an ego trip. So, I want to know when, it begs the question, who do we serve when we're elected? The voters who elected me or the corporations? All of the rubber chicken dinners, all those white rolls, it is very flattering. But I, like some religions require, I think it's imperative that elected officials take a personal inventory every day, every week, every month. Who do I serve? Do I serve the voters who elected me? Thank you.
All right, moving on to public hearings. It's all the public comment cards I have. Moving on to public hearings, item H1.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request from the Sheriff's Office to participate and accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, and there's no match required.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobia. I have no cards. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H2.
Commissioners, in this agenda item, staff is requesting that the board set the fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed millage rates. And the agenda attachment provides the board with details on the 25 individual taxing districts that Brevard County is the taxing authority over. And all of the millage rates have been established in accordance with the Brevard County Charter cap limitations. So, as property valuations increase, the, in order to comply with the charter limitations, the millage rates have all decreased. And so, for example, the general fund millage rate has decreased by 8.53%. The aggregate proposed millage rate is also equal to the rollback rate and has decreased by 8.58%. So, with this proposal, the board would not be advertising a tax increase for the final, the final budget hearing. It would just be advertised as a notice of budget hearing.
Commission, what's your desire?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tobia. I have no cards. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item H3, Commissioner Tobia requested that J6 and H3 be combined since they're both related. And unless the commission is in disagreement with that, I'm going to go ahead and combine those two items since they're both related, H3 and J6. Okay.
I have no objection.
Seeing no objection. I have to abstain from this item and I'll, I'll fill out the paperwork because Health First is my employer, so I'll sign the correct form and make sure that gets filed. I will not be commenting on this issue. I'll, you know, obviously manage the meeting and, and address the commissioners as they choose to speak and, and I'll also handle the cards, but I won't be offering my opinion. All right. So, item H3, does staff want to introduce us?
Good morning, Board. Item H3 is Health First Inc. and Health First Shared Services, Inc. Request to change the zoning classification from BU1 and BU2 to PUD with waivers. This is application 22PUD0001, it's in District 2. As part of the PUD zoning application, the board is allowed to consider conditions. In this particular case, we've included 10 conditions for the board's consideration, which would allow the applicant to move forward and ease through some of their site plan approval, just identifying things that we would be looking for as they move into that second phase of development. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them on item H3.
Okay, is the applicant present? I'm not sure if they've all filled out cards. I don't want to- They have. Okay.
I'm okay with Kim only getting two minutes.
No, I, I just because-
I can't do that, darn it.
It's a public hearing, so I know it's, the rules are a little different. 15 minutes, okay. All right, Ms. Ruzenka.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Zanka, members of the county commission. My name is Kim Ruzenka, Lacey Lyons Ruzenka, 1290 U.S. Highway 1 in Rockledge. I am honored to represent Health First and Health First Services regarding this transformational project. This is a PUD application. We're asking for the PUD zoning with the approval of the PDP. You have on your screen before you the draft concept, which is the PDP. Obviously, full engineering has not yet been done and that's part of the list of 10 conditions that Mr. Hawkins referred to to help move forward the next process of site plan. We've actually already submitted for mass grading and so we are moving forward with this project under a hold harmless agreement because this had been delayed. I want to thank staff, planning, engineering, utilities, and public works have all met with us on numerous times, met with the engineers to move this project forward. It is an amazing project. It's taken three years in development to get where we are today. And I have with me a variety of individuals who are involved with this process to present this project to you. We have Matt Gerald, CEO of Retail Services, Jonathan Flight, the Vice President of Health First Facilities, Ken Good with Atkins Civil Engineering, he is the project manager. Also, you have cards for John Wilt, who is the engineer of record, and Dan Perez, who is also an engineer with Atkins, who is here to answer questions. Everyone's putting cards, whether or not everyone needs to speak or not, we don't know, but those are all our team for today. And with that, I would bring up Matt Gerald.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Gerald, 6450 South U.S. Highway 1, Rockledge, Florida. Commissioner Tobia, I guarantee you, I will keep my comments under two minutes. So, I want to thank you all for giving us this time today. And for over 85 years, Health First has been here to support Brevard County. Our physicians, our nurses, and our associates are all dedicated to improving the health and well-being of our community. This project is the next evolution and transformation of Health First, where we're going to continue to provide healing well services such as hospitals, ambulatory surgery center, medical office buildings, but we're going to add in living well services such as retail, healthy food options, and childcare. We will not have a fast food restaurant. We will not have a doughnut shop. There will be no bar or alcohol on this village, but we will have an educational center, which will allow folks to come in and get free education on how they can make sure they keep themselves healthy. As part of our commitment to this process, we have engaged our community by offering up multiple town halls. We were able to hear back from the community members. We've offered up electronic surveys and opportunities. I myself met with the Harvard Del Rio Condominium Association, two representatives, to hear their concerns. They had a few concerns regarding traffic and noise. I met with them. We were talking through that and working with them. I provided my personal cell phone and email, as well as committed to giving them a monthly update and meeting with them once a quarter. We're here for the community and we want to make this community better by improving and transforming healing well and living well services. So, with that, Mr. Flight?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Flight. I am the System Vice President for Facilities at Health First, and I'm here today to help you see a little bit of our, our future plans. I'm going to advance the screen. And here we have a bird's eye view of our project. The northern one-third of our wellness village consists of the Cape Canaveral Hospital replacement. And we've developed the concept so all of our patient rooms have a view of the Wellness Village Park, of the Indian River Lagoon to the northeast, or to the Rookery Conservation Area to the west. The remaining two-thirds of the village is composed of a medical office building, a child daycare, a concierge, wellness retail, juice and coffee bars, healthy food hall, a spa, an education center, and a fitness center. And this concept allows us to make a dramatic change in the character of the entire area by providing significant new green space and important health and wellness services. The hospital itself is planned to have 300,000 square feet, 120 private beds. It'll be designed to withstand a category four hurricane, and it'll be elevated 13 feet to address the possibility of storm surge. In conjunction with the hospital is a 90,000-square-foot medical office building. The first floors of the hospital and the medical office building open out onto a park-like setting of the village, which is on top of a two-story garage. Now, this slide gives us a view from directly above of our site, and it allows us to talk about the access onto our site. On the north, we're bounded by East Merritt Drive, East Merritt Avenue. And working from left to right, we have an entrance for our service and deliveries. The second entrance in the middle is a connection to East Merritt for the ambulance entrance. And the third entrance is the access for emergency department patients who are driven in by car. On the Borman Avenue, which is the, the east side of our property, we are working from north to south, and they have a same-day surgery discharge, an entrance into the garage, and a public transportation and drop-off and pickup opportunity, and then a second entrance into the garage. But our main entrance is off of Highway 520, and for folks who enter our campus, they will either proceed directly from 520 into the garage, or they'll take the West Perimeter Drive to the hospital main entrance itself. This picture is a cross-section of the village from the perspective of standing on Borman Drive and looking to the west. The ground level of the hospital and the central utility plant is shown at 13 feet elevation, and it's displayed on the right. On the left side of the cross-section, we see a two-story parking garage and other features that are arranged to marry up to the hospital. The cross-section view gives us a feeling of the three-dimensional character of the project. And to assure efficient vertical movement within this project, there's a total of 19 elevators, so they are positioned and to allow us to have good access to all services. This is a ground-level perspective of the hospital's main entrance. And you can note how the circular drive serves the main entrance. The glass connector on the right side will provide a protective walkway between the hospital and the medical office building. And this rendering gives us a perspective of standing in the Wellness Village Park itself and looking at the south elevation of the hospital. The progressively step-back massing of the hospital prevents it from overpowering the community and our village. These slides give us a perspective of several of the buildings within the Wellness Village itself. On the upper left, we have our education center. On the upper right, we have a healthy food hall. On the lower left, we have the retail building. And on the, I'm sorry, on the lower left, we have the retail building. On the lower right, we have the coffee bar shown. And I'm going to ask Ken Good to come up now and talk a little bit more about the rest of our presentation.
Good morning. Ken Good with Atkins, 2671 West O'Gally, where the, the engineer has, has said for this project. Our team has worked closely with staff to develop the waiver request, which is, this, this process is revolving around. They got quite numerous. We're, we're doing our best to keep them as, as refined as possible. We're doing our best to keep them as refined as possible. These waivers principally focus on two components of the project: building height and building setbacks. We are not asking for an increase in density from the existing zoning. What these waivers will allow us to do is to cluster the development on this project to facilitate what was trying to be accomplished here and allow us to create these park-like settings. Without these waivers, we wind up with, you know, large, big-box expanses of parking. By clustering everything together, pushing it to the edges, pushing it up, we can create these park areas that we wouldn't normally have. And that's really what the requests and the waivers are all revolving around. I know another question that's going to come up on this is stormwater. How do we develop all this site, the parking garage and everything? We do have some plans in place. There will be some underground storage. Currently on site, there is little or no stormwater treatment. A lot of the runoff is just going straight off, so when we finish this project, all the runoff coming from this site will be treated, which it isn't now, so it's going to improve our water quality overall. That's all I have from the engineering side.
We are here to take questions, if you have any, or to listen to what the public has to say if there are cards. This was heard at a community meeting on April 25th at the site of the old Pro Health. There was almost 50 people that showed up and talked to the members of Health First. We had a Myra hearing on April 28th, and it was unanimously recommended for approval, and planning and zoning on May 9th also unanimously recommended for approval. We'll be seeking your approval to change the PU1, the BU1 and BU2 to a PUD with a preliminary PDP. Thank you.
All right. Is Marcus Herman?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that Myra did look at this project and unanimously voted for it. The variances they were asking for seemed minor compared to the project they were bringing to the island and the difference it was going to make in the District 2 area and whatnot. So I see no reason to not, you know, carry forward with this. Myra vetted it. We vetted it well. We talked about bussing. We talked about parking. We talked about drainage. We talked about noise. We talked about traffic, and they were able to come together and convince us that they had handled these, you know, they're on top of these issues, and we voted unanimously. And frankly, we think it's a very exciting plan. I don't think anybody doesn't think it's a game changer for the area, for all of Brevard County, because it is a lot different than what we've seen in other hospitals. They're really changing the structure, and to take that small piece of property and do what they've done on it is simply amazing, in our opinion.
Matt?
Yes.
Quick question for Mr. Herman. I'm sorry. I was listening to your public comment, and I'm not putting them together. Didn't previously you say with their... This is in District 2, is it not?
Correct.
Okay. Wasn't your argument just five minutes ago that you don't have a District 2 representative to put on hold since you don't have that advocate? Is that correct? Is that what you said?
I said if it has not been vetted by a, you know, somebody, the District 2, and Myra is indeed right now the District 2, we do an awful lot of work for District, you know, our area in Myra that's in District 2, and this project happens to be in District 2, in Myra, excuse me, in the Myra area. The hospital's going into the Myra area.
Okay.
So it has been vetted. I believe it's been vetted fully, and I, you know...
But your argument previous was you did not have a commissioner and wait on items until you had a commissioner.
If it was going to be, I clarified that, that if it was going to be a no vote...
Okay.
And it was going to possibly have an adverse...
Health and safety was the other thing, I'm sorry.
An adverse effect on that area, that it should wait. If it's not going to be an adverse effect, then I see no reason not to carry on.
I'm just trying to understand the difference between an elected official and an appointed body, and just in case it comes up here at the next issue.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mary Jane Nail.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary Jane Nail, Cocoa Beach, Florida. Sad to see Health First go. I spoke with Larry Garrison when he was alive and suggested that they move the hospital, and I'm so glad to see that they have. Two of facility that's going to be very beneficial to the public. Brevard County is devoid of wellness, what would you say, education, promotion, and living. So I'm delighted, delighted, to see that they're going in that direction. One thing that I have noted, recently I went to Miami, Florida, and I observed a Prudiken program. And the Prudiken program, I found out after being in Miami and observing it, that it is Medicare-approved for cardiac patients. And so I looked into that and found out that the nearest for people living in Brevard would be Orlando, Altamont, Orlando, where they have the Prudiken program for heart patients. The success ratio of people improving from their heart conditions is phenomenal. As I said, Medicare approves this particular program, but you have to qualify. So I would just like to say that it's wonderful that they're putting this in. I'm hoping that they'll look into the Prudiken program with the Prudiken people. I believe they're located in Missouri, and if they could add something like that closer for Brevard County residents, because you can literally turn your life around and live many years longer than you would normally live by going on the Prudiken program. So with that, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate your kindness.
Thank you. All right. I don't have any more cards specifically for H3. I do have some for J6, but are we going to hear them separately, just together? If that makes sense, separately, but one after the other? Is that your desire?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'm okay with voting on this before, if that takes any concern out of folks. I did have a...
Ms. Ruzenka, did you have anything following that you wanted to follow up with?
Oh, Mr. Flight does say they are looking into that program, the Prudiken program. So we're here for questions. Other than that, we would just seek your approval of the PUD zoning with the PDP.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Ruzenka?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. How much overall is this project going to cost? Just a rough estimate.
I know they've been approved to issue $508 million in bonds for this project, and that's all we're authorized to say at this time because they're still evaluating.
A little over half a billion, potentially.
Yes, sir.
Rough estimate, how many jobs are you guessing this would create?
1,000, according to Mr. Flight and Mr. Gerald.
Okay. Is it fair to say, and I'm not a physician, but the adding more beds would have a benefit to Brevard County and its residents?
I'm going to let someone from Health First speak on these issues, but I would agree, but yes, I'm not authorized.
All I need is a yes. So the last question is for you. So you're going to bring in $500 million, create 1,000 jobs. We're going to have a direct benefit. How much are you asking? We're giving money up here. How much are you asking for?
What do you mean? We're not asking for anything. They're not asking for any public funds.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. You're bringing in $500 million. You're creating 1,000 jobs, and you're directly benefiting people in Brevard County, and you're not asking for any tax dollars? Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
I'm still going to vote for it, but can we switch that no bars? I was a little concerned with that. She'd not told me that, and I'm wavering, but thank you so much for doing this without direct support up there. You proved that it can be done. And are you a profit or a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit. Part of this will be profit-oriented. Some of this will generate taxes, but some of it's not.
But overwhelmingly, it's a... Health First is a nonprofit, so you're doing this through that model as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move... Motion is passed.
Are you going to approve it with the waivers and the conditions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? And again, as a reminder, I have to abstain from this vote due to a conflict, and I'll fill out all the correct paperwork. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item J6, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for moving this up. This is about redrawing some Myra boundaries here. Let me be very clear, this is not about getting rid of Myra, but today, what we can do from stopping Myra to get even more money. Clearly, Myra does not need more tax dollars. If they're spending money on signs with plans for multiple other signs in the near future. And I think we have a slide, Mr. Walker. So it's a sign up there. I put smiley faces for the protection of those people's identity. After this, they may not want to be associated. Is Mr. Lalo with Myra available?
He is out.
Okay. Then I will go, because I think I know most of the questions here, so I'll go over them, but it's pretty unfortunate. I hope he's well quickly. This sign right here costs almost $21,000, $20,788 to be exact. And in fact, there are two more currently in the plan, $60,000 in signs. Let me tell you why this is extremely concerning for me. Number one, Merritt Island is not a city. It is a nebulous area. Florida Statute 163.370 allows for CRAs to include housings, housing for families or persons with low income. So this board has been confronted over and over and over again about a housing crisis, and Myra decided to spend $20,000 on a sign that this money could directly be used for those individuals with low... But it gets worse. They have plans for, and I'm not making this up, I didn't know these things existed until I read their plan, self-compacting, quote, "big-belly trashcans" and bike repair stations at transit shelters. Again, I don't think, these are cool items, but I don't think these are things that hit the level of affordable housing. More than $1,000 have been spent for conference travel. We have $2.1 million earmarked for mall overlay district, which I think is, in all honesty, I really don't know what it is, but I do know it's probably not more important than affordable housing. I don't know where there's extra money in our budget other than areas like this. And when I had those affordable housing folks, they were always asking for new money. We have money in our budget here that can go help. Florida statute allows that. Instead, we've decided to put up these signs. So let me tell you what I'm putting forth here, is that we draw out the new project that we just permitted or gave the exception for permittinging out of Myra. So that new delta in tax dollars will go into the general fund, so we can spend it on things I wouldn't mind earmarking it for affordable housing. Here is direct dollars. Now, I don't care, and I can't do this individually as a board, but what I don't want it is to end up on more $20,000 signs on here, because it's very, very difficult for folks to come into my office and say, "Well, we need affordable housing." And I say, "Hey, listen, we've got pretty signs." So I asked the county attorney, and I have a motion here, the motion to direct staff to begin the process of modifying the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency Myra boundaries in accordance to Chapter 163, Part 3, Florida statutes, including but not limited to Section 163.361, to remove Health First Hospital Complex located on Merritt Island from Myra and to amend Myra redevelopment plan accordingly. And I also asked the county attorney as to whether or not Chairwoman Zonka could vote on this, and I was informed, no. And initially, I was a little disappointed on that one, but then I thought, why can't Commissioner Zonka vote for it? And the reason she can't vote for it is because this would benefit her employer. We have a level of government that I'm not saying, the state of Florida is saying, is getting in the way of private enterprise. And today, we have the ability to take this new tax revenue and stop it from going to areas like this. In their plan, they talk about the Merritt Island Mall competing with the Viera Mall, and I think it's absolutely atrocious. Arguments will be made that Myra may not like this, and I'll tell you right now, you don't need to come up here, Myra doesn't like this because this gives them less dollars so they can't put up more signs like this. There's talk about the Health Village being tax-exempt. There's 828,000 square feet. Hospital space is only about 320,000 of that, about 38 percent. 25.12, according to their plans, are retail space, thus taxable, as is parking. So we are talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, or in terms Myra can understand, like five or six signs a year. I know this is a little ridiculous, but I think affordable housing is a crisis going on here in Brevard County singularly. We've seen rent go up, and here is a way where we can focus funds to that without raising taxes. And all it takes us to do, first step, is draw a line around what you just saw there and say that resource is instead of going to Myra that hinders private enterprise. Here, we can help private enterprise and help people at the same time, or we can get more signs. So that's the motion, Madam Chair. I'm more than willing to answer any questions, but... And short of that, I'll move forward with the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, I have two cards. Marcus Herman?
I'd first like to just kind of go with my original thoughts on this, and then maybe I can try to address some of Mr. Tobias' concerns. First off, I am certainly opposed to redistricting Myra for a few different reasons. This board may or may not know that that parcel of land where Health First is looking to build a new hospital and wellness center used to be a Kmart shopping center. That shopping center created the tax base used in the Myra district. Since the building had been taken down many years ago, that tax base was considerably devalued. I see no reason why Myra should not recapture that tax base that it had once before so it can continue the good work that it does. Now, I believe, as Mr. Tobias has alluded to, that it's a... The hospital itself is a nonprofit organization, so I think that's accurate now from what I'm hearing. But the wellness center, on the other hand, is a for-profit business. And in that wellness center, they have coffee shops, daycares, spa, health, you know, a gym. All of those individual components through the Myra area, if someone had brought their business to Myra, would be subject to that tax base. I see no reason why this wouldn't be the same. There have never, I don't believe there's ever been, nor do I think there should be any lines redrawn in the district because a business decides to move into the district, a business of this size. So again, I see no reason to consider redrawing the lines on this parcel. The bottom line in my mind is that this commission charged Myra with redevelopment and improved infrastructure and to remove Blight, among other functions. We have done so, and the result are projects like this coming before us today. Myra has worked at a number... May I finish?
Board, you can have another few seconds, but 15 seconds or so.
I think that the work we're doing is the hallmark of redevelopment, and this is one of the many projects showing that. Ultimately, that means that your plan is working.
All right, Mr. Herman.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions from... Does anybody have any questions from Marcus?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
One question. I'll allude back to Florida statute 163.370 that tells what CRA money can be used upon. I'll give you a copy if you want, but it says very, very, very clearly that you are allowed to use, quote, "provide housing for families of persons of low income." So the money that you use for this sign could be used to develop housing for low-income families. So I just have one quick question. That $20,788 sign, or low-income housing, as the chair of the board, which one is more important to you? And there are a couple more of these coming, but I'm just asking about this one. Which is one or the other?
Well, I don't think it's one or the other. Redevelopment is not one or the other, okay? So let me expound.
Which is more important? You voted for this, did you not?
Okay. Mr. Tobia, yes, we did.
Okay, that's all I need, Madam Chair.
This board, again, approved our plan.
All right, thank you.
That's not fair, Madam Chairman. He is, he's making accusations that are not fair and unjust.
Okay. If I had a nickel for every time somebody come up here and disagree with this commission?
Well, no, it's not that.
That would be a rich commissioner.
It's not that. Okay.
Mr. Ratteman? Mr. Ratteman?
I'm Jack Ratteman.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's a bunch of people in here, you should have went.
My name's Jack Ratteman. I live at 568 East Hall Road, Merritt Island, Florida. And I'm here to talk about the sign there. Okay, when was the last sign that was put on Merritt Island? We're not a city, but we have SpaceX and Blue Origin up there, and those people are coming to Merritt Island to spend their dollar, we hope. So when Elon Musk comes down, he's going to see some rinky-dink sign out there and think we're a bunch of yee-haws. It would be nice if he came and wanted to spend his money there, and maybe invest more money, that would be more taxes that you could get. When was the last sign put on Merritt Island?
Can you direct your comments here? Because if you go back and forth, then...
Okay, I'll tell you when it was. It was Commissioner Pritchard. Pritchard put it up, then it was Nelson, it stayed through Nelson, it stayed through three commissioners, so it's, no, four commissioners, up to Mr. Loebert. That's 20 years. So after 20 years, we get another sign. 20 years plus that 20,000, that's $1,000 a year advertising for Merritt Island. We're not a city, so who's for our behalf? Okay? I see I have a few seconds left, so I would ask, what do the other districts do for low-income If somebody could answer that at the end of this, then let me know. But I don't think Myra can buy property and turn it into low-income housing. I don't think our charter lets us do that. So all the stuff about low-income housing versus that sign is kind of, you know, a bad argument.
Commissioner Tobia.
Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Ratteman. I'm glad you brought it up, because that last sign, my secretary was one of the people by the last sign. I looked it up, it's kind of interesting. That sign was put there by volunteers, and it was, there was fundraising. They didn't waste tax dollars the same way you waste tax dollars. Number two, I don't know what you had for breakfast this morning, but Elon Musk doesn't drive around in a Tesla looking at signs like this. Cars, they drive themselves now, and the ones that don't, they have GPS. We don't rely on signs. This may make you feel good about yourself, but let's stop thinking about this privilege that folks like you and I have, and let's start thinking about the folks that have trouble making ends meet so they can afford housing that's going up 15 or 20%. And yeah, that doesn't help them one iota. So I appreciate this, but I made a promise at the beginning that I wouldn't vote for tax increases, and we have resources here that you may not agree with state statute, but I have, I have it right here. You're more than welcome to look through it. I got it from the county attorney's office, as well as us looking it up, and it's very, very clear. I'll read it again. It gives, quote, "providing housing for families and persons with low income," Section 163, Section 370. I'd be more than willing. You just made in my call a bad decision by putting up a sign, and it plans for two more, when you could be using that for, and I'm not arguing with you, there's more that probably needs to be done for low-income housing, not only in this district, but, or not only in this area, but across the county. But it doesn't give you license to waste more than $20,000 on a sign because Elon Musk is going to like it.
Since he asked a question, I should have time to re-answer.
I'll give you 30 seconds to respond.
Okay. Well, I would like to know what your district does for low-income housing, and do you do anything personally for low-income housing for people, for homeless? I'll tell you what I do. The guy that works with me is homeless, lives out in the woods in front of the hood with his dad for the last four years. So after he works with me trimming trees all day, he goes out in the woods, no shower, and no air conditioning, and sleeps.
Thank you, Mr. Ratteman.
So when you're wanting to do something good.
So, Mr. Ratteman, you're bragging about paying someone such a low living wage they can't afford to stay in a, that's your argument?
He makes the choice.
I think we're a little, yeah, we're a little off the subject.
There you go. Get me in the back.
All right, I have no more cards. Commissioner Pritchett?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Tobia, can I ask you just a couple of questions here? Are you...
I'll answer as best I can.
Okay. You made a comment earlier, because I'm trying not to get into all this other things. I don't think Myra's not caring about homeless. But you made a statement that caught my attention, that to remove this out of Myra, that it is a benefit for Health First. So my question is, is being in the Myra made it a little bit more of an issue for Health First trying to bring this development? That caught my attention.
Madam Chair, well, you heard from Ms. Rosenka that she, first of all, had to go through Myra, so that's an, that's an initial step that they wouldn't otherwise have to go. And this isn't me saying it, this is the chair, speaking with the county attorney, that she has to recuse herself. The reason she has to recuse herself is because there would be some benefit for this going away. So I'm inferring, because she can't vote, and because she works for Health First, and they would benefit, that the opposite of a benefit there is a debit, and hence, it's not good for Health First. Have I spoken with Health First directly? Absolutely not. But the fact that she can't vote for it is pretty clear, that we are hindering Health First's ability to move forward.
Okay, that kind of caught my attention, which makes it worthy of maybe an investigation here moving forward. The struggle I do have, and this has been stated a couple times, is that the, having an elected body make decisions, I think, is important. And that's what I, I'm going to need to go in and research this, and see if there's something different going on with Myra, because it's not a normal CRA, and it's not under an elected body like a city would be. So Commissioner Tobia, I'm going to support this today, to do some more research on it. Not that I think the guys in Myra aren't good guys. I mean, I don't believe for a moment that they're willing to make anybody homeless. So I think sometimes we try to prove some points to make a few points. But I do think you made a good point, that we might be putting undue burdens on businesses right now that might not be necessary for the good. My recommendation is, is I think Merritt Island should start working on incorporating soon, and have an elected body that represents them.
Second. There's other steps to go forward, obviously, but...
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what you've mentioned here has merit, and I would like to look into it further. I don't know that I'm ready to vote for anything, yes or no, right now, but I definitely think that you've got, brought up some very, very good points. And I think it's also a good idea that, I've always felt like the D2 commissioner was the mayor of Myra, because they don't have representation. But I think it's something worthwhile for them to think about, that maybe they should go forward and become their own legislative body. So just something to think about.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tobia?
May I reread the motion?
Sure.
I'm going to, just for the benefit of Commissioner Smith here, because I actually, you know, missed part of this, this is only to begin the process. So staff would have to bring this back to us. This would give us more time to investigate. This would give Myra more time to justify that sign and other things like that. So this does not take them out of it, this just begins the process. It's my understanding that there would have to be another formal vote. So motion would stand, but again, it's just to direct staff to begin the process. It's my full understanding that, and if there's not, I would hit a pause until we hear it again. I just don't want to put staff through the arduous task of doing this, and there being no opportunity for this to go through. All right, then I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Tobia, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further requests for discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, I had to abstain from that vote. And while I can't comment on this specific issue, I will say that I've been known in the past to express my thoughts on Merritt Island incorporating mainly for their own benefit. But that's a whole separate issue that I'm sure we'll address in the future, if District Two Commissioner coming in decides, or if we decide beforehand. But, and I just want this room to understand that it's not our fault we don't have a District Two Commissioner. And if we could unilaterally make decisions based on our district alone, then we wouldn't need five people up here. So by no fault of this board, we don't have a District Two Commissioner. So that's all I'll say about that. All right. Okay. Moving on. Okay, I believe we have the big item next. So if we're going to take a five, seven-minute break, because we've got roughly 29 cards and a lot of people, so just give us a few minutes. Yeah. Yeah.[106.72]
...of what we believe is going to be the contribution of the Weston Cocoa Beach Resort and Spa Tourism Development Tax Dollars. We've spent a considerable amount of time becoming educated on how the tourism development taxes work and are utilized to support beach improvements, capital facilities, the tourist information center, cultural events, the Brevard Zoo, and other activities. What I would like to emphasize to the residents of Brevard County is that in no way is the grant that we are seeking going to impact any uses of the tourism development taxes, with the exception of the Promotion and Advertising Fund. And let me reiterate, because I cannot emphasize this enough, there seems to be some amount of misunderstanding or misinformation on this. Twenty-five percent of every tourism dollar generated by the Weston is going to go towards beach improvements. Fourteen percent is going to capital facilities. There's not a penny that is going to come out of that, with the exception of the administrative fees that are allocated to those tourism development tax dollars. And down the list, two percent to Tourism Information Center, Cultural Events, and Brevard Zoo. The balance of what we generate does go to the Promotion and Advertising Fund, which will potentially be the source for this grant. And for this allocation, we are assuming that the $350,000 fund for 2022, 2023, and beyond, for the USSSA contractual obligation, is funded by the tourism development taxes currently generated by the existing hotels in the county. Driftwood is projecting to generate just under $2.3 million of tourism development taxes in the first year of the Weston's operations. After covering its share of the county's costs associated with the collection of the taxes and the Weston's share of the Tourism Development Office's administrative costs, there will be just over $2 million of tourism development taxes available to be distributed to the funds. In the first year of operations, based on the formula that is outlined in the grant application, the Weston will only be eligible to receive a reimbursement of just over $888,000. Now hopefully, we exceed these projections and we do more than, we generate more than $2.3 million of tourism development taxes. But as our current forecast stands, if we generate the $2 million, again, all of the other funds will get their prorata share without any impact from this potential grant. This grant and this development is a win for everyone. The residents of Brevard County, who will benefit from the property and sales taxes that this property generates, the businesses of Brevard, who benefit from indirect spending of guests and access to a world-class facility, and even other hoteliers who will capitalize on spillover business. We commissioned an economic impact study to calculate the benefit to the county. The results are summarized on the slide. Upon stabilization of the resort and convention center's operations by year five, Johnson Consulting, the author of the study, is estimating the Weston Resort and Convention Center will generate over $159 million of economic benefit to the county on an annual basis. From a fiscal impact, this project will generate $13 million of tax revenue. Specifically, the county and property taxes of 1.1 million and 2.1 million respectively will go towards helping offset some of the tax burden on the residents of Brevard County. In my personal opinion, this is the justification for considering a grant of this size and for this length. Driftwood is a longstanding member of the Brevard community. We own three hotels in the county today, the aforementioned International Palms Resort, the Hilton Cocoa Beach, and the Crown Plaza Melbourne, and anticipate breaking ground in the next couple of months on our fourth hotel, the Melbourne Element. We've been working with county officials on this project for several years now and are committed to ensuring its success. This grant is a vital piece to do so. Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Weston Cocoa Beach Resort and Convention Center development and the details behind the grant application that we're submitting for your consideration. At this point, I'm going to end my prepared remarks and welcome your thoughts and questions on the project and the grant application. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions right now, or do you want me to go through the cards? Cards first? Okay, thank you. I'll probably call you back up after.
Appreciate it.
All right. Rob Varney, Varley, I'm sorry, and then Jack Smink. Rob Varley.
I live at 6467 Leonard Avenue in Port St. John, Florida. Boy, I forgot how much fun these meetings are. Twenty-four years running the tourism office, and I loved every minute of it. And you guys, I admire what you do, because this isn't an easy job. And, you know, you've got a project sitting in front of you that is, well, it makes my mouth water. It's a great project. I mean, the design, you're going to do well. And you're pretty smart bringing in those high-powered guys back there behind you. And I think the county ought to be as supportive as they can of this project. If it means, you know, helping fast-track some permits through, or whatever you need to do to make it work and make it more smooth, you ought to do it. And I think you ought to back them when it comes to marketing. But I don't think you ought to give them direct money. And here's why. You've got 110 hotels in this area. And now, they're not all high-end properties like these guys, and they're right, this is going to be one of the highest-end properties. But they're not going to be one of the highest-end properties for long, because what's happening in this county is amazing. And you're going to see a lot of development, and you don't have enough money to put a million dollars onto each product. And what you ought to be doing is talking to a professional staff that you hired, and they've got the capability of doing it, and create cooperative marketing programs, including this new company, and let's get going and sell this whole community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jack Smink? And after Jack, Jack Crockett?
I'm Jack Smink. I live at 410 Needle Boulevard, Merritt Island, Florida. And the reason I'm here today is I'm a little bit, not a little bit, I'm a lot disappointed in the fact that we're even considering this, any money at all. Because once that, once that horse is out of the barn, it's going to, it's going to open up opportunity for other, other hoteliers and developers to ask for their own programs. And you're going to hear a vacuum like you cannot believe. So I think it's a big mistake. My question, and biggest question, is a company of this magnitude, why they can't find the funding to do this project without approaching us for this, this kind of funding? And I have yet to get that totally, question totally answered. Telling me that the people that is funding the program is not going to come along unless we give $30 million is just ludicrous. So I'm real disappointed in that. I think it's a, I think what they're planning on doing is great, not against the footprint of the project. I'm just against the fact that they're coming to us. Not only that, this, doing this, it will, this thing started in 1986 by this gentleman that's getting ready to come up and talk to you all here in a minute. And it's worked good since 1986. It will destroy it. It will take it out at the knees. It will no longer exist in short order. And that's my opinion. Thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Bonnie King? Or, I'm sorry, Jack Crockett and then Bonnie King? Is Jack Crockett here? Okay. Sorry, Bonnie, you'll be after Jack. Two Jacks, it kind of messed me up.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today.
Can you state your name?
I speak on behalf of the citizens.
Can you state your name?
Because I worked on behalf of the citizens.
Okay.
In 1986, I spent five months of my life working as a result of the opportunity to do something for Brevard County as the chair of the committee that decided to get this tax finally passed. It had been, it had been turned over twice. And what happened was that we found a solution. Communication and information had not passed in the proper venue, and as a result of same, we decided that we needed to explain that this was the tax that you don't pay. And that's what we did, and we pressed hard, and we turned it around, and we made, we have made one of the most successful tourist development councils and counties in the state of Florida. Revenue-wise, telling the world what we have, it's been a marvelous, marvelous experience. Now, I want to say that the reason I'm here is to tell you that I walked the county with a sign that said, "This is the tax you don't, you don't pay." And as a result of same, I don't want to be shut down by the fact that we're going to consider giving away one red cent to any private enterprise. That was never the intent, and I'd honestly say that I would be very, very happy if you would decide against doing same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bonnie King? If we could just hold off on the applause. Cindy Albright, after Bonnie King.
Great, thank you. Bonnie King, 1945 Holt Tribe, Merritt Island, Florida. You've heard from your constituents, your community leaders, the Hotel Motel Association, and you've heard from your own advisory board, the Tourist Development Council, all say this is not a good idea. Allowing this proposal to go forward, you are opening a Pandora's Box. I worked 32 years at the Space Coast Office of Tourism as they promoted and marketed the assets of this beautiful county. And what an asset this Weston will be. The conference center, and yes, it is a conference center, a 50,000 to 60,000 square-foot under air, not a convention center, not a major competitor to the millions of square-footages that's offered by markets in Orlando, Tampa, and Miami. In 1988, I, along with the first tourism director, Ralph McMullin, put together a sales action team, which is still in operation today. We would work together to, with all the hotels and attractions, to travel together, to market together, and to promote together for the best ways for the Space Coast name and destination to be heard. The Weston will certainly be welcomed for their input and their participation. Do not open a Pandora's Box, where you will now see future developers and requests come forward. It will never end. A rising tide lifts all boats. Our tide is rising with the continued success of rocket launches, cruises out of our port, the new aquarium, our clean beaches, USSA, many others. We welcome Weston to be part of this, not with a dedicated grant handout, but as an added partner. Do not support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy Albright. And after Cindy, Sarah Malmstrom?
Good morning, Still. I'm Cindy Albright, and I've been a resident in Cocoa Beach since 1963. The beach break behind the International Palms is my home. I have no interest here, other than to tell you what a wonderful opportunity we have. We have tremendous people here to support us with this project. But we also have tremendous people that are here that have worked very hard in this community for a very long time. This is a for-profit business, and they come to the table with a lot of leverage. I think about what the Duda family has done for the infrastructure of our community, and what have they given us back? They're making money, and everybody wants to be here. But my question to you all is, if this is a for-profit business, let's give them a reasonable amount of money, and certainly not for 30 years. Never heard of the 30-year marketing plan in my life. So as a local, my special beach break, I welcome the folks from Driftwood and this wonderful property. But I also think, as they say, why give a Chanel bag away on sale when they have the money to pay full price? Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Malmstrom, and after Sarah, Don Kelly?
Sarah Malmstrom, 441 Nautilus Drive Satellite Beach. I'm the local chapter president of the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, and I'm a restaurant owner. FRLA, and I'm going to read a prepared statement from the Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association. FRLA opposes the project being proposed today because it fundamentally misconstrues and misapplies the statutes on which the proposal is based, obligating tourist development tax revenues in a manner not intended under the law. It applies TDT revenues to the enrichment of one entity having a potentially negative impact to other projects and establishments, who should rightfully expect to benefit from TDT revenues. It incorrectly asserts that an establishment owns the TDT revenues it may collect and has the right to use these funds to subsidize its development and operation. This sets a dangerous precedent for other establishments seeking similar ownership or control over their existing or future TDT collections. Because I lost a minute, I'm not going to be able to read the whole thing. This proposal incorrectly grants an excessive amount of TDT revenues to benefit a single private project and makes that grant for an unprecedented length of time. This is contrary to the stated intent of the law, and it is to the detriment of other important and productive businesses in Brevard. We certainly see value in the project being proposed, but we do not believe that the value should come at the expense of every other tourism-based business or endeavor in Brevard County. An establishment one does not own TDT revenues it collects. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah? And then Don Kelly? Oh, you're Don Kelly, I'm sorry. After you, it'll be Michelle Martindale.
Good morning, Still. I'm Dawn Kelly. I'm Dawn Kelly. I am a resident of Brevard County for 40 years, 18 of which have been in Cocoa Beach. First, I'd like to say Brevard County is growing leaps and bounds. It's not a retirement community anymore, and it's so wonderful to be part of that. There's lots of young, thriving families coming to our area. Although I work for Driftwood, I'm here today as a Brevard County resident with a large group that's here as supporters that want our voices heard. But for time purposes, I'm speaking for a group of people. I would like to say that these people that are here are hard-working hoteliers, hospitality individuals, and residents. They're here, and they'll benefit the most from this project. For us to come to this meeting is a true effort. Most of us have working schedules. We have children, we have to arrange childcare, and it takes a lot of effort to be here. It is the extreme vocals that are the ones that are rallying, that are few, long-term, influential business owners, and some residents with loud opinions. Well, I'm here today to speak for the silent majority, and to let you commissioners know that we're in support of this grant, this request and this project. The new hotel will generate many new jobs with opportunities to increase tangible income for many people, with a significant improvement to their living standard, and it will generate more tax dollars, which will allow us to not have our taxes raised. The project will still increase money for beach restoration, the zoo, and all those other great causes that won't be hurt at all. They're not asking to take away anything that they won't generate. The private sector, the space industry, such as SpaceX and Blue Origin, they need and want this project as well. They're currently utilizing upscale hotels in Orlando. Their VIPs are corporate events. This hotel will dramatically change the caliber of clientele on the beach side, giving local businesses more support. The overall economic impact more than justifies approving the grant. They are requesting silent majority. That's in favor, please stand up.
Wow. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, just one quick question. Don?
Don?
Thank you, I appreciate it. It was very kind of you to speak on other people's behalf. You know, you lose the silent when you clap, but you did say you work for Driftwood?
I do. I've worked for Driftwood for 10 years, and I'm very proud.
Super. Are you being, are you on the clock right now?
Absolutely not.
Okay. They must be good employers, then.
They are.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle Martindale, then James Knutson?
Good morning, I'm Michelle Martindale. I live at 300 Columbia Drive in Cape Canaveral, Florida. This past May, I just retired for 41 years in the hotel business. I started in 1981 in Titusville, in the hotel. And during that time, we didn't have the tourist tax dollars, and we worked really hard to bring it to fruition. And since 1989, I have volunteered with the Tourist Development Council, with the Marketing Committee, Beach Committee, Cultural Alliance, and Sports. And during that time, we've come, we've been successful in promoting the area as a whole, and we have never provided private dollars for our private industry to promote themselves. We've always promoted ourselves as an area, and we want the visitors to come, and if we're successful, everybody gets their fair share. And I feel providing a million dollars a year for 30 years for a private entity for their self is beyond the scope of what our tourist tax dollars are for. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Burrows, after James Knutson? It's Knutson, correct?
Knutson, yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much for letting me speak today. I appreciate it, as does everyone.
State your name, please.
I live in West Melbourne, and I think words are always important. And in this instance, we've heard words like rebate, refund, grant, and the like. Sarah, two speakers ago, was accurate when she said hotels simply collect the tax. They have no entitlement to it. They have no right to it, any more than when I bought a Soda this morning, the clerk could put any of that money in her pocket. She simply collected, and that's what the hotels do. Weston is a wonderful group. They're going to build a beautiful place, whether or not you give them the money. The question is, and it's a little bit colloquial and hokey, but are we going to throw the baby out with the bathwater? Everyone who has a hotel or any other venture is going to come looking for this money. One person said to me, "Why could this group benefit the county as a whole with their advertising using money that would otherwise be used by the entity you hire to promote every business in the county?" And that's what's important here. The statutes do not allow, do not allow for this tax money to be used for a convention center. If you look at 1250104, Section 5, it mentions convention centers if they are public. If you look at the word "grant," a grant is always for a public purpose. When we can...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Susan Burrows, and after Susan Burrows, Charles Malone?
Good morning. My name is Susan Burrows. I'm from Cocoa Beach, Florida. I live less than half a mile where this facility would be built. What I'm hearing today is that everyone agrees that Driftwood, Weston, is a good organization, one that you already have a relationship with. Being that, this affects me directly, and I hear people who are in the county, but not, it wouldn't impact them as much as it would me. I've been coming to Cocoa Beach for 47 years. I've lived on Cocoa Beach for 10 years. I've seen the ups and downs in the community. I've seen how we were impacted after the shuttle program ended, and we are coming back. Now we have an opportunity to build a solid foundation for the future with the port, the space program, attracting businesses like the Weston. They want to invest in our community, but they need help. They're putting up $145 million of their money, but it's not enough for the project, and they can't get the financing without your help. So it's a partnership and an investment in our community. This will offer locals better employment opportunities, more activities, more dining and entertainment options, which I look forward to, all while strengthening our revenue base. It'll bring tourists to all businesses who will pay those bed taxes. I welcome this much-needed improvement in our community, and I thank them for leaving in Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Malone, and after Giles, Glenn Wasserman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Giles Malone at Sykes Creek Drive on Merritt Island, and I've served on your TDC from 2006 to 2010, and I currently serve on the TDC, working for you as a volunteer, trying to give you the best advice, or best counsel, if you will, from, I think, 35 years of tourism experience that I've had the pleasure of working in. It's a very exciting time in Brevard County. This is harvest time, right? We're generating incredible amount of tax. But I'm opposed to giving this folks a 30-year gift marketing program. I think that's definitely the wrong way to go, as you've heard today. We have 10,734 hotel rooms in Brevard County, over 4,000 vacation rentals, all collecting the tax. And all these folks you see today who'll be speaking from a hotel standpoint have been putting in the work for three decades, generating this incredible time we have now. These folks are very successful developers. They will develop this property and make a beautiful hotel and make incredible profits. We don't need to give them $30 million. We don't need to do it. I suggest, like the Tourism Development Council suggested to you, we give them a five-year marketing help supervised by your Office of Tourism. We have a great staff who are very capable of using this money to promote the hotel in a very good way. All of Florida, all the TDCs and a lot of the county commissions around the state are watching you today to see what you'll do. This is a very important time for the TDC's growth and development, and I think you need to send the right signal all across the state. Don't open the floodgates on this tourist tax. It's being managed very well to help all local programs. For those of you who are leaving the county commission here soon for greener pastures, you've done many great things on the county commission, many great things, and I compliment you for that, and I've always supported you for that. But don't let this be your legacy, a 30-year marketing grant. Thank you.
I have a question, since you're on the TDC board and you're also the, one of the managing folks of Space Coast Daily. Has Space Coast Daily received any funding from the hoteliers to run the number of stories regarding this issue?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I just noticed you've ran several in opposition of this item.
Because we have a great passion for what we do, and we love this county, and we've received over 1,800 comments from people in opposition to this.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted folks to know that you're also Space Coast Daily.
Thank you.
All right. Glenn Wasserman, and after Glenn Wasserman, Dan Manzares?
Missure, I filled out a speaker card.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, reading names. Dan Manzares, and after Dan Tom Williamson? Could you state your name, please?
My name is Dan Manzares. I'm with the law firm of Dubovian, Simmons, Knight, Manzares, and Neal in Orlando, 332 North Magnolia. I'm here on behalf of the Radisson Resort at the port to express our client's objection to this proposed agreement before you. I had a long litany of items to talk to you about, about why the agreement before you, even though it is intended to be a grant agreement, really needs to be looked at a lot more closely, and you really need to read between the lines. However, Mr. Wasserman's comments essentially summed it up for me. They can't build the project without the support from the county using the TDC money. Now, to make it clear, our client does not object to the project like a lot of the other individuals. We think it's a great project. We think it's a great economic development driver, which is how the agreement is initially written, as an economic development driver, which is entirely an appropriate public use of, of purpose for using public funds by a county. Our issue is with use of the tourist development tax to fund this $30 million quote-unquote grant. And again, as Mr. Wasserman pointed out, they need the grant to finance their project, to finance their project so that they can build the convention center and the resort destination, hotel they want to build, and the parking facility, and all the retail establishments they want to build on this project. Without the grant, they can't make it. That in and of itself means it's inconsistent with the state statute regarding the use of tourist development tax. You all know the tourist development tax cannot be used to fund the pri- You all know the tourist development tax cannot be used to fund the privately-owned convention center or privately-owned facilities. So essentially, that's what you're doing. We believe it's inconsistent. We believe the county commission should deny this request and go back to the drawing board to work on a more, more particular economic development criteria with incentives, which you're entitled to do. Quickly, I'll also point out to you that I disagree completely with Mr. Wasserman's claim that this is consistent with your appointed development plan for use of these funds. This is a diversion of $1 million of funds that do not go into the tourist development fund. They go directly to this entity. That's inconsistent with your plan. Under your ordinance, you need a unanimous vote of four of you to approve a change to the plan. And we ask that you deny the project. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, who's your client? You mentioned your client.
Radisson Resort at the port.
Okay, Bob Bogger is your client?
Yes.
Okay, are you being paid to be here today?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Tom Williamson, and after Tom Williamson, Robert Klimkowski.
Good morning.
Hi, Tom.
Tom Williamson, 765 Pine Place, Merritt Island, Florida. I'm here today representing the Cocoa Beach Hotel and Lodging Association, and I just have a statement from our organization. The Cocoa Beach Hotel and Lodging Association, which includes 15 lodging establishments in Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral, recently voted unanimously against the proposal being considered today. It's our overwhelming belief as collectors of the bed tax that it should not be given to private developers. Further, the constant insertion during previous meetings and reliance upon the subjective term "transformational" and its definition as relates to real estate development will create unintended consequences and wreak havoc throughout the county and, as mentioned earlier, the state of Florida as it relates to future hotel and resort development and what qualifies for special consideration for bed tax funds. We hope you, as our duly-elected officials, also recognize this and will vote against this proposal for the sake and integrity of the TDC bed tax collection and its intended use. And I must point out to you that the Driftwood member of our organization chose to leave the room during that vote and did not participate in the discussion or in the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Klimkowski.
Robert Klimkowski, Melbourne, Florida. Good morning, Chair and the Board. I am here today to speak about an ROI for Space Coast Daily. I believe it had the most interactions out of all the articles against Driftwood on January 8th. That was when they were proposing roughly $80 million for the grant. Now, coming back after it went through TDC, they're asking for $30 million of TDC, and TDC uses roughly 47% to market. But what is the ROI on that? What I want to see are the numbers. For every dollar we give to the TDC, I've heard 50 to 1 back. That's wonderful, but could they do it better? Can Driftwood do it better? If so, why not give it to them and hire their marketers? Because this is a special type of convention center. This is a $330, or $330 million project that at 75% capacity would garner roughly $1.5 million a year in taxes. In short of participatory budget, I'd like to see what they can do. And why not have a merit-based return? So the first year, they get 25%. If they can do it better than the TDC, then the second year, they get 50%. So on to where they're fully vested after four years, and they have a merit-based return by the numbers. That's the best, I think, for both sides, and that way you're not picking winners or losers, you're just going by the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Schwartz, and then Jack Ratterman.
Hello. My name is Mario Schwartz. I live in Cocoa Beach. I've lived in Cocoa Beach for four years. And I come here as strictly a resident and citizen of Brevard County. I have nothing to do with either Driftwood or the hoteliers or anything else. I just come here as a citizen. And I've been watching this for the last few weeks. And it came into my mind that, first of all, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, why should us taxpayers help support and help promote a business, a multi-multi-million-dollar business, develop their property? It doesn't make any sense to me. I don't help the Radisson build their property. I don't help, you know, the restaurants build their property. Why are you asking us citizens to promote and to support a business like this? It just doesn't make any sense. A couple of other things. First of all, as other people have said, I think this is going to set a precedence. Once you do this for this company, you're going to have every hotelier, every prospective hotelier, restaurant businesses, come to you and say, hey, we're collecting this tourism tax. Why don't you let us keep some of it, and we'll promote the tourism in the county? Well, that's not what the tourism tax is about. The tourism tax is supposed to be distributed by the Tourism Development Council, not by the people that are collecting the tax. So that's, that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Ratterman, and after Jack, Scott Knox.
Jack Ratterman, 568 East Hall Road, Merritt Island. One time I went to some people, and they said, will you loan us some money? And they said, they gave us a great, gave me a great proposition. But then somebody else said, well, why don't the banks loan them the money? You know, and the person said, if the banks doesn't want, does not want to loan them the money, then maybe you shouldn't loan them the money. Well, I didn't listen. I loaned them the money. And of course, it went south. And this is the same thing. If it's such a good deal, then they ought to be able to get the money from the banks with no problem. And, you know, not spend tourist council money that could go to the Veterans Center, to the amphitheater, to beach restoration. So I say no.
Scott Knox. And after Scott, Nick Patel.
Scott Knox, representing Driftwood and Dad, 1300. I was a little reluctant to come up because my glasses got smashed, and I don't see as well as I used to.
Can't see any of us.
But I'm here to take issue with the lawyer for Radisson. I couldn't agree, disagree more with him if I wrote the statute myself. It's very clear to me that you can use this money in the way we're proposing to use it as a rebate, which is permissible under, two sets of Florida laws, under the TDT statute, as well as the Economic Development statute. And I think we made that clear in the agreement. And I think we'll probably have to work this out somewhere. I can see that. The Radisson is taking a different position. I completely disagree with them. I just thought you, I don't know that.
Commissioner Tavaia.
Mr. Knox. Welcome back.
Hi there.
Hold me here. My memory is a little foggy. Weren't you the county attorney in 2017 when, and sat up here?
Seems to me I was.
Okay. Is it fair to say, as the county attorney, you probably reviewed or wrote the better part of the ordinances that came out of your office?
Some of them, yeah. Not necessarily the ones we're talking about.
I think you're going to find out I'm talking about a different one.
Okay.
In fact, I'm talking about Ordinance 1721, entitled, Creating a New Chapter to the Brevard County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 3, Code of Ethics. Are you familiar with that one, sir?
Sure.
Okay. So my question is this. Why did you not register as a lobbyist for Driftwood, yet you did for many other entities such as NASA Investment Properties LLC, Anthony Lopes, Eugene LaMondo Matthew Development LLC, U-Haul in Florida 452 LLC?
Because I was hired to do the legal work, which I've done.
And that was what I was hoping you were going to say. Because, let me quote something someone said on February 21st, 2017. I'll give you a hint. It was you. Lawyers do lobby. So the board has to be careful about that. If an attorney is meeting with individual commissioners, they're usually lobbying. You still stand by that?
Usually, yes. You're right.
No, no, no. This is what you said, sir.
No, I'm saying, well, yeah, I stand by saying, usually, yes.
I think he's referring to the statement by saying usually, yes.
You just made.
The last sentence of what you just said.
So you, I am, usually, you're that one exception. So you're in fact not lobbying? I'm trying to figure this out.
I'm here, I'm here just to speak to legal issues.
Okay, so have you had any conversations with any of the members of the board, one-on-one, on things either in or outside of the contract?
None but you on the legal issue.
We spoke with other things, other than legality of it, and I have text messages accordingly.
Well, my, my job is to point, is to...
I'm just, I, listen, I understand you're a member of the Florida bar. I'm concerned about your license here, that you created a chapter, and you're not following it, even though you followed it for other... Does that put your client at any, any tough spot?
I don't think it does, because I didn't talk to anybody about this except you, and that was maybe two days ago or three days ago, whenever it was.
Well, it was not only talking, there was emails, was there not?
There was, well, I talked to you, and there wasn't.
And were there text messages as well?
There probably were.
Okay. I'm just, I think the better judgment from now on, certainly since you are aware of it, since you followed it in the past, would you, if there is a question, probably register as a lobbyist?
Probably a good idea. Probably a good idea. I would agree with that.
And I hope it doesn't put your clients in any, any tough...
No, I don't think it will, especially since you were the one that proposed some language for the order, the agreement. So I was responding to that in part.
I appreciate it.
All right. Nick Patel, and after Nick, Akshar. Okay, Nick.
Hello, this is Nick Patel. I've been living here in Brevard County since 1988, 271 Lake Shore Drive, Merritt Island. I'm the owner of a few hotels in Brevard County. We have built ground up in Cocoa Beach, Cocoa, and we are developing one more property here in South. So we are completely against. County never helped us to build our property. The numbers they are giving you, I don't know if they are right numbers or not. You know, because we are developer too, you know. When somebody developed the property, they knows how much the property exactly going to cost. You know, they bought this property, I don't know, about 24 million or something. And they're going to build so many number of rooms and square footage. You can find out by the going rate, you know, that how much per square foot is costing. So number they are giving you, 380 million, I don't think is correct, first of all. The property I have in Cocoa, which has a convention center, and it has a 14-acre land, okay? If you see all the outside area, my square footage is more than they are proposing even. You know, so I don't think, you know, you should give them any money. And 5% bed tax you're collecting from each and every hotel owner. You're collecting lots of money. You can utilize that money somewhere else, you know, by building, you know, I mean, developing the beach area. Nice walkway, just like you go to Daytona Beach or the Miami Beach. You have a nice walkway, restaurants and everything, you know, to bring the tourists. You guys never did something like that, you know, so I'm completely opposed to this thing, you know. And we are developing one more property. If you guys give them, you know, we ask you for that money too, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry if I got your name wrong. If you could just state your name, please.
Akshat Patel, 612 South Washington Avenue, Titusville. I just bought a business there, but what I've seen is, been in, working for myself for years. What I realize, if you're making profit out of your business, you should carry your own weight. Don't ask for a handout from nowhere, as long as possible. If not, get out of business. $380 million investment, and you don't have a plan for $30 million worth of marketing. Something is not right. It's not going to go too far that way. They will, of course they will. They're a big entity. But you got to know your marketing before you start your business. Especially that big, bigger of a business. They're not a little entity. They need to know their marketing beforehand. And the tourism development tax collected is not just for them. It's for every small business in Brevard County, so it should be spent accordingly. I oppose that $30 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Samir Patel, and after Samir Patel, Bob Bogger.
Morning. Samir Patel, 5575 North Atlantic Avenue. I grew up in Brevard County, you know, haven't left. Second-generation hotelier. You know, I've seen what it takes to develop a hotel. And what we're up against right now is one of the largest hotel companies in the country. They have deep pockets. They have funds. They're going to develop this, they're going to develop this property from start to finish with or without the $30 million of a 30-year marketing plan. What's that mean? What's a 30-year marketing plan? That hotel's going to be redone five times over the course of 30 years. Marriott's going to mandate it. And you think giving them $1 million every year over the course of 30 years is going to help them out? A ramp-up phase, generally for a hotel of that nature, is probably one to three years. You know, when you go beyond that, they're just sucking, taking marketing funds from the Tourism Development Council into their own marketing plan. So when they've created this property, you know, they're saying they have over 150,000 square foot of meeting, flexible meeting space. You know, I looked at their largest ballroom from the last public meeting we went to. I think it was like 15,000, 16,000 square feet. That does not create additional tourism for the area. It's a business hotel. It's going to profit themselves for profit in their hotels. It's not going to affect any one of our little hotels. You know, they're going to take away the funds that could be given out to the county, but for themselves. I sit on the capital improvements facility. You know, several times they, we have grants or funds that come out for $10,000, $15,000, $20,000. They do so much homework and research for us to approve or deny these. You know, and all of it helps put heads in beds throughout the county. For somebody to come up and for you to just, to aimlessly just give them $30 million for a marketing plan that does not exist, you know, I think twice about that, and I highly oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bogger, and after Bob, Deepak.
Madam Chair, Bob Bogger. I am not getting paid. I'm retired. I do this for fun. This group over here has been getting paid. Driftwood pays very well, okay? So let's get that straight. All the data they gave you, they paid for, and you're relying on it, okay? The rest of us have been working for a long time. All these guys build hotels, I build hotels. Took me 30 years to build what I did, and God willing, I will build as much as these guys are doing in the next three years or the next 10 years, okay? My complex will be twice that size, twice the room, more meeting space, more water features. God willing, if I'm around here, without any subsidies, unless we're all going to give the money out, because if you're going to give it to them, give it to me too. I want it. Fair competition, because why do I have to compete to somebody in my neighborhood that we're going to subsidize and I'm not? It's just unfair. And if this is such a great idea, we're having an election in November. The citizens passed the TDC tax, so let them ask this as a, put it on, put it on. Let's vote for it. Let's, let's take it away from you guys, because you take out everybody in this room who's getting paid. Take out the politicians, okay? You'll find that most people will not support this. So, yes, people are getting paid. This is America. They get paid, okay? I do it for fun. I'm retired, and my kids.
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're a hotel owner. I mean, you don't do this for fun.
Yeah.
The reason why...
Look at my trust this year. I gave it all away.
The reason why I asked...
This is fun.
Can I speak, please?
No, you asked me a question. I'm going to answer. I'm doing this. This is fun.
Okay, but you're a hotel owner. You're a hotel owner.
I own a lot of assets, yes.
Yes.
So do these guys.
And I asked him if he worked for you, the attorney that came up and gave his legal opinion if he worked for you.
Of course I pay people that work for me. My corporations...
He seemed really defensive with the question. I just asked if he was hired, if he was working for you. That's all I asked him. And if he was being paid to be here, because somebody... was being paid to be here, because somebody else was asked if they were being paid to be here, so I thought I would stay with that sort of consistency.
But, but you never asked these guys if they were being paid.
No need to get defensive about it.
Well, I know, but you make a big deal about getting paid in America.
I really, I really didn't make a big deal about it.
Yeah, you did.
Now, I have a question now. Some of the suggested funds were, you wanted to support this...
We're past my two minutes, I'm gonna sit down, thank you.
Okay. Well, just for the record, Mr. Bogger has been pretty vocal regarding his disagreement with how the TDC spends their marketing. He's very vocal about how he disagrees with how they spend their marketing, and yet, he doesn't, he wants the TDC to remain in control of all those marketing dollars, so I'm not quite sure where that, that was the question I was gonna ask him before. He didn't curse, you're correct, you didn't, you're correct. He wanted to, but he didn't curse. All right, Deepak? Patidhar? Thank you, sir.
I'm a resident of Merritt Island, I've been in this area for 33 years. We own a bunch of hotels, we built them grounds up. Thank you for your service, especially on this day, it's quite heated over here. We are citizen of this county, and hotel owners, a bunch of us, and we oppose this for many reasons. Who is it really gonna benefit? Is it really gonna benefit the citizens of Brevard County? Is it gonna benefit just Westin? Who is it really benefiting? That's the question we need to ask. Is it, if it benefits Palm Bay through Titusville, go for it. If it doesn't, you need to rethink. Is it really gonna help our residents? Would something like a theme park would help better, to bring more tourists into our area, or something else? You think a convention center's gonna bring this much business into our area? Just because we see projection and that? Is that gonna be the final thing? So that's what I'm thinking, that we're making a big error in thinking that we give the money back to a private organization to spend it on marketing. They already spend a lot of money on marketing through their Marriott product, Westin and so forth. Let them do it on their own, just like we have at Convention Center, that we own in Cocoa, or any of our hotels. We spend our marketing money, and we don't wait for the government, and we don't go to the government and say, hey, I need a million dollars, or even half a million dollars. If you guys are giving us a million dollars, we have a hotel that we wanna put together downtown Melbourne, we'll be out here saying, we'll put a 30,000 square foot convention center there, with a hotel with 200 rooms. Then what happens? You tell them yes, and you tell us no? Then we have, then we have to hire lawyers, saying, why are you, why are you telling my client no, but this client yes? So I oppose this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another Nick Patel. Was there two Nicks here? I have two different addresses and two cards for Nick Patel. One on A1A and one on Tucker Lane. Okay. Just didn't wanna miss him, thank you. Devin Bagnell? And after Devin? Viren?
Devin Bagnell? Good morning. My name is Devin Bagnell. I've been a resident of Brevard County my whole life. I've truly enjoyed growing up here on the beautiful Space Coast. Right after high school, I quickly found my niche in the hospitality industry, primarily working in Cocoa Beach. As someone who currently operates in this field, it should be known and cemented how life-changing a project such as the Westin will be for people like me. There is an innate excitement and security that clientele traveling here for aerospace industry will bring to us, the hospitality workers of Brevard. What the Westin is projected to bring into this area is something that many of us have dreamt of, to be able to stay local and contribute to the communities that we were raised in, while making a higher income, doing what we do best, taking care of others. There's no denying how much the service industry in Brevard yearn and depend on this type of business. A huge portion of this community, many who are currently waiting tables, washing dishes, or creating next week's schedules, and couldn't make it here today, are very eager for the Westin project to materialize. The influx of career hospitality folks from different areas looking to bring their expertise to Brevard, collegiate minds ready to start their first real-world job, or even people that are already looking to use their skills in a prestigious brand like the Westin, they are all passionate about the breath of fresh air that Driftwood's vision will breathe into Brevard County. There is an active generation ready to work, live, and play in Brevard. The granting of this proposal will only positively ensure that this vision is not only brought to life, but will remain on the cutting edge for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Viren Kumar? I am so sorry. I asked for assistance and they couldn't get it either, so, if you could just restate your name?
Viren Kumar Patel. I'm a resident in Merritt Island, and I say no to this grant, because it's, that money is for everyone, not just for one person. I mean, that money needs to be utilized for development of the whole county, not just one business. They've asked for 30, $30 million, a million dollars a year, to be invested into marketing. They haven't showed us revenue generations for 30 years yet. Secondly, if, even if they will be able to provide it, how sure are they can, they're gonna have, they're gonna be able to do, make to mark every point? Not only that, are they sure they can, they will spend exactly a million dollars every year into marketing? And regardless, they will not be able to. That money will be only beneficial to them, not to the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan? And after Sandra, Jenna Scott?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. It sounds like this proposal would be better for the EDC and not the TDC, and I request that you listen to the very common sense recommendations of the TDC. What concerns me very much about this project is the number of changes that we have seen from the beginning. So this started last year in April with a proposal of $80 million, and it's gone through numerous changes. After trying to circumvent the TDC, one of our commissioners, and this being brought to a zoning and planning meeting, they stood in front here, and they said, this proposal is about, that they are bringing a convention center that will compete, put them on, put Brevard on the map to compete with Orlando and, and Miami. Orlando's 2 million square feet, Miami's 1 million square feet. This, in their exaggerated numbers, is 100,000 square feet, but in reality, the ballpark, the ballroom, is 16,000 square feet. What concerns me very much is the agreement that is before you. The changes made to it are done by NOCS, okay? What is the former county attorney doing, making all the amendments to an agreement? And then we look back on some of the other resolutions that have come before this board that raises concerns. For example, the towing resolution that was done by a lobbyist, where the resolution was presented without being vetted, vetted by staff, it went on the, on the agenda to be voted for, and that was between 107,000 percent increase. We've had other deals brought forth by our, these lobbyists, for example, the Brightline bond, and we had an opportunity to get a good deal for Brevard, but we didn't. This is not good for Brevard. And finally, on the agreement...
Thank you, Sandra. Jenna Scott?
Agreement is very poor, I'm gonna hand this out.
Thanks for letting me speak again. As the former mayor of Cocoa Beach, I think that this request should be denied, and I would, I'm not being paid to be here. I also would like to know, and maybe it could be restated in the future, this agreement, or request, has changed almost daily for the last six weeks, at least, and I thought I heard Mr. Wasserman say that they wanted 1.5 million now, not 1 million a year, so I would like that clarified. You know, the skids have been greased for this corporation already in Cocoa Beach. I'm sure the property of the International Palms would be developed, redeveloped one day, but they were grandfathered to 40 units per acre, when, if it were an undeveloped piece of property, they would only get 20 unit, 28 units per acre. So they've got advantages from Cocoa Beach already, in terms of 28 percent increase in what the current ordinance allows for development of a transient lodging. Every time Cocoa Beach talks about this project, they go, oh, this will reduce the amount of taxes to the residents. Well, contrary to that, every time this happens, we pay more and more taxes. I think that you all should deny this, and I agree with everyone else who preceded me in saying to deny this. Thank you.
Mike Miller? And after Mike Miller, Eric Garvey?
Thank you. I'm Cocoa Beach City Commissioner Mike Miller, and I'm here speaking in support of this proposal. It's in anticipation of questions, I need to reveal that I'm paid $6,000 a year to assume that position represent the best interest of the city. If Brevard County Economic Development Commission were considering to recruit new industry in Cocoa Beach, it would not be a desirable location. The city's 95 percent build-out and has zero industrial and office sites available. While the city has groceries and pharmacies to support our population, we'll never have a Walmart, Target, Home Depot, or Lowe's. Tourism is the primary business of Cocoa Beach. There is little business tax residue from other sources, and we have to make the best of what we have. Well, what we do have is six miles of beautiful beachfront on the Atlantic Ocean, plenty of sunshine and waves for surfing, and we have an unobstructed view of the Kennedy Space Center for viewing rocket launches that's unparalleled anywhere else on this earth. The mayor, my fellow commissioners, have been working diligently to transform Cocoa Beach from a daily tourist attraction to a resort vacation destination, one that would attract families with disposable income to stay for multiple days and enjoy many outdoor activities and support local businesses. When I became involved in local government 10 years ago, the International Palms Hotel was a dilapidated eyesore. Hotel occupancies were depressed, and any vision that it would be redeveloped seemed like only a pipe dream. Driftwood Properties recognized the potential far better than we did. They purchased the property in its entirety and have been working cooperatively with the city of Cocoa Beach for more than six years on plans for a four-star resort hotel and conference center. Brevard County can now actively participate in bringing this project to fruition.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I just make a final statement?
I'm not letting anybody, because we have too many cards.
Madam Chair, one quick question for Commissioner Miller.
Sure. You have a question, maybe you can pose your answer and some of more what we wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, for being here, I appreciate it, especially your stance in Cocoa Beach. My question is, as a city commissioner, how much money has Cocoa Beach offered up to this developer?
Actually, we put in a sewer line, actually, to service a outbound property.
I understand, but how much, because this is, this is $30 million that you're asking us, so my question is...
They haven't asked us for anything, other than some...
So in other words, no money?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Eric Garvey, I live on Merritt Island. I am the chief operating officer for Bob Bogger's various companies. I rise in opposition of this $30 million giving to this private project, and I'd like to yield my time back to Bob, if that's okay?
You can't do that.
I'm just kidding with you, just kidding with you.
He clearly doesn't want the time, anyway.
I won't take any more of your time, other than to stand in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. He already said he was being paid, and he said he went for Bob. Mary Jane Nail? And after Mary Jane, we have Mayor Ben Malik. And no, he didn't sign his card, Mayor Ben Malik, I said it, to be respectful. Hi, Mary Jane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mary Jane Nail. I represent taxpayers. Maybe I represent people that are on limited fixed income, like retirement incomes. My retirement income is $400 a month from Social Security. That's it. I live in the city of Cocoa Beach, Florida. I've served as a vice mayor of the city of Cocoa Beach, a commissioner. I led a beach renourishment project, and at the time, President Clinton was saying, no beaches would be renourished anywhere. Well, he sent people, and we had a great time, and beaches are now being renourished. I rise in opposition to this giveaway to Driftwood, and the reason being that if they need money, they should go to the people that have the money. And that would be Elon Musk, Jeff Bezos, the Berkshire Hathaway guy, Warren Buffett, Tim Cook, any of these multimillionaires that have plenty of dough and would like to invest. This is private enterprise looking for private money. This is not private enterprise looking for government handout. If anybody needs a handout, it is probably the retirees, who are living in now housing that I couldn't even turn around and buy. My house is probably worth a few mil. I built it for 80,000. So, there you go. Times are tough, but in tough times, go to the money people. And by the way, Elon Musk stays in a little hovel in South Texas when he goes there for launches.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Malik?
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners.
State your name.
Let's talk about Ben Malik, a mayor of Cocoa Beach, paid 500 bucks a month, so, negative $12 an hour. As a, let's talk about money. I love money, I'm a commercial banker. So, where does the taxes come from? This tax is paid by visitors that come to our county. I don't stay in a Brevard County hotel, so I am not paying into this tax. It's generated by visitors that come here. Let's just get that straight. What's in it for everybody? Currently, that property is, and I'm gonna take the emotion out of it, we're gonna go right to numbers. That property is taxed at about $18 million. Generates over $100,000 to the city of Cocoa Beach, as is, okay? You're talking about a project that's anywhere from 300 to 380 million. Current construction costs are anywhere from 350 to 400 dollars a square foot. This is the only four-star hotel that is proposed in the entire county. That property, as it stands currently, has had 1,000 calls for service for public safety. It is frankly, an eyesore. We need this type of investment in our town, and if you wanna take the burden off the residents, this is what a $300 million infusion would do, it would take the burden off. And you could put safety rails in it, you know? Put it as such, if it doesn't generate the $2 million per year in proposed revenues or taxes, cap it at whatever that number is. You can put metrics in there to make it quantifiable. That's my proposal. I mean, at the end of the day, this is new money. It's not replacing money that's there, it's on top of the existing tax base. We all have budget season, we're all faced with the same challenge of Homestead residents, property owners capped at 3%. I assure you, our expenses due to inflation is not capped at 3%. We have a huge imbalance, and we have to balance our budgets. We can't print funny money. So please, support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Tavaia, did you have questions?
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanna give you opportunity, you may know a little bit better, did Cocoa Beach offer any direct financial resources to, I just wanna give you the opportunity as well?
No, we did not.
Okay. The board up here, you probably heard, you've been here, I appreciate it, decided to go to the rollback rate, so we don't have to advertise. Can the same be said, or will be said? I'm just looking at, at you guys' website right now.
No.
It's not, so you, you've actually, you, you actually, you didn't go to the rollback rate, correct?
No, and I'll tell you why.
Well, you don't have to tell me why.
No, I don't.
My point is, you raise taxes, correct?
Right.
Or you will raise taxes, and you're not offering any dollars, and you think it's good for... And you think it's good for us, who decided not to raise taxes, to provide thirty million dollars. Is that, is that correct, in your banking opinion?
Well, in my banking opinion, we, you guys added properties to the tax rolls. We're laggards in new construction. We need projects like this that would offset that. Homestead resident capped at three percent doesn't make the math work. That's where we're at.
Well, I appreciate the insight and the honesty.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick question, Mr. Malik? If the Cocoa Beach Commission had, you know, say over the TDC and how those tax dollars would be spent, do you believe that your board would probably support this project?
We were all supportive of this project.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. All right. On that note, I have no more cards. Ready for the John Tobias Show? I am.
Are you okay, Madam Chair?
Go for it.
Thank you. I spent a little time on this because this is quite a bit of money. And let me get right off the bat, I'm excited about this project, and it's hard for me to say because I'm Hilton's honors member. I'm not part of the Marriott-Starwood family. But that doesn't jade my opinion. And for the folks at Driftwood, I really appreciate your effort. You guys certainly employed a lot of lobbyists right there, so, and I don't blame you for asking. I have, you know, I don't know why you only asked for thirty, oh, wait, you started eighty. Now you're at thirty million dollars. I don't blame you at all. I did get a call from someone on the Driftwood team, and they asked for me to find a way to make this contract work. Whenever I vote no, I try to provide some sort of alternative because I think it's really unfair to just offhandedly say no. So I did actually find two solutions that would fit this contract, and Don, this is slide one. And let me be very clear about these two. Neither of these two solutions would have required one penny less than the thirty million that is offered. So these solutions contemplated the full thirty million, not the three and a half million that the TDC, but the full thirty million. Get that up a little bit more. The rejected bit Bethany put on is probably really important. I'll go over these. The first one was, the term shall be one year from the effective date with up to an optional twenty-nine renewals of this agreement. As you guys heard at the beginning, we do things on an annual basis. It's probably safe. So I asked for this to be done. This was rejected. Again, this is the way all grants are administered by the TDO office. By the, I looked up, a federal life sentence is twenty-five years. This marketing plan is longer than a federal life sentence. This will, to put in perspective, sit through seven generations of new commissioners up here and countless unpredictable economic factors. Let me put it in a different perspective. I almost wore grunge up here. I thought that would be kind of cool. Let me, because grunge was cool thirty years ago. Let me tell you what also was cool thirty years ago, Beanie Babies. Beanie Babies came out this month, thirty years ago. No one plays with Beanie Babies anymore, but we're determining, let me tell you, who else hadn't been through an interview? Monica Lewinsky. No one had heard of Monica Lewinsky thirty years ago, yet we're contemplating providing a grant for something thirty years. And to put this a little bit more PG, gas was a dollar eleven a gallon here in Florida. So clearly, economic times change. So I thought it'd be a little more safe to ask for, to do this on an annual basis. That option was outright rejected. So the second one I offered, I thought this was pretty fair, and I'm a little confused because what Mr. Wasserman said is, listen, if we sell this, the finances stop. So I just defined ownership, and I sent that over. Owner, ownership, owned refers to Dad thirteen hundred north. I got all the legal terms saying you have to be full and complete owner of this. That was not the case. In fact, in the contract, it says they have to maintain like ten percent, and I think it's even less. We'll talk about that later, ownership. Guys, I own one share of Tesla. That does not make me Elon Musk. It is absolutely ridiculous that ownership of a property is determined by ten percent. I imagine if we asked these fine individuals up here, we'd find out that they own quite a bit more of the ten percent. So again, I just don't want anyone to think that, that I didn't give this any thought. I did. I spent a lot of time with this, and that stuff was thrown out. So before I get into the three questions I have, which are very basic, and in all honesty, I shared this with the folks. Is this fair? Is this good for Brevard? And do they need the money? So those are the three questions I've had. I've been upright with them. But I do have, in all seriousness, some suggested language. And let me tell you why. This is the second slide here, Don. I would have supported that other language, and so I'm probably off the table here. But for clarity, there's some problems with, with, I think, the contract. The six whereas clause, section two point one-two and section four point, four point one, all referred to a four and a half star hotel. Section two point one states, a successor hotel must receive a four and a half star rating as defined by Forbes Travel Guide. Again, this wasn't language that was proposed by any of us. This was proposed by the Driftwood folks. So I have some suggested language, just to make this a little bit more clear, and it's changing two point one-seven. I'm sure this is friendly because this is just compiling in one place. Westin Cocoa Beach Resort and Spa shall mean a Westin hotel with a minimum of four and a half stars as rated by the Forbes Travel Guide or its successor. That's, so I would ask, you know, the rest of the board, they've stated they'll do it in two different places. I just want to put it, because you guys know the whereas clause really doesn't have a legal effect. That will be an ask for me, from me, that that be changed in the contract. You can see the line. All, the only change is with a minimum of four and a half stars as rated by Forbes Travel Guide or its successor. Again, it's not my language. That's the language that they put in the contract. So I do have those three questions. I don't know who from the Driftwood folks wants to answer these. But I, as we'd go to slide, slide three, this is a letter that we received recently. It's less than two weeks old. I guess this would be Mr. Rodriguez, I guess, may want to respond to this because I think his name's on the letter. The letter says, is you, our competition will not be the existing hotels along the Space Coast. Is someone, this is on Driftwood letter, does someone want to, is that, is that, I want to make sure that's correct, that this was not doctored or anything like that?
It absolutely was not doctored.
Okay, so that is, that was two weeks ago. Is that still true?
We believe that we will be offering a product and meeting space and convention space.
I'm just asking, our competition will not be existing hotels along the Space Coast. Is that, is that still accurate? Your words, no. Okay, that's all I was asking. Thank you. Super. Great. Can I go to, can I go to slide, slide four, please? You may want to stay up there.
My pleasure.
See?
I'm sorry?
Can we turn it the other way?
You could just stomp off when you don't want to answer questions.
Yes. So did you not commission a study by Charles Johnson Conference Center Marketing and Economic Impact Study? Did you not, did you?
We did.
Great, wonderful. I used it, and I actually read it. So I'd like to go to page twenty-seven of that, or you can just look up here. Again, it's not been doctored. In the first paragraph, it says, and I quote, "The Westin Cocoa Beach will be the largest event facility in the market, so it is reasonable to assume that it will absorb many events that are currently occurring in other Space Coast facilities." In fact, it's so clear that we list those facilities up there. You will cannibalize, is it fair to say that, by the way, I want to make sure it's correct, you know? Did, did you not pay for this Johnson study?
Again, I think I answered that earlier, but yes, we did pay for it, and we commissioned it.
Okay, super. Thank you. Can you explain the difference here of what you've told us, or what you've told the TDC, and what's in the study that you've commissioned?
I can't. However, Charles Johnson is here today, and if you would be okay with it, I'd actually invite him up so he can clarify his statement, and if you'd like, I can further clarify my statement.
That's, that's the chair can.
Yeah, I'd like that. If you're going to talk about this, it's probably a good idea that you ask, ask the guy that did the study.
I did not know he was here.
That's, this is the exact reason why we invited him to come.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you want me to clarify my statement first, or?
No, I think yours was pretty clear, right? I think this is pretty clear, but I'd love to hear more.
Wonderful. One moment.
Thank you. My name's Charlie Johnson, president of Johnson Consulting. I live at Six East Monroe, Chicago, Illinois. Grew up in Florida, know it well. I think the answer to your question is this. The objective of the project is to diversify demand. At this junction now, Brevard County does not really have a presence in the group meeting sector that is at a higher scale. And what's going to happen when the market opens, some events will shift, others will come in because of the...
I appreciate the explanation. My question is, do you just stand by this, where you, you stated, I guess, that is reasonable to assume that it will absorb many events that are currently occurring in other Space Coast facilities? Do you stand by that?
I stand by that.
Okay.
You have any further questions?
Not, not for you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate your honesty here. I'm just trying to put the stuff together. Okay, next. I appreciate, next is, is this good for Brevard County? This would be slide five, I think. Commissioner Smith, I'm trying to pick you up on this one, I'll be honest. Slide five, and I pulled this directly off, off your website. "We utilize capital formation strategy, strategies that take advantage of federal programs such as qualified opportunity zones and the EB5 investment program, for which we have, for which we have a dedicated team member." Is that, just want to make sure I wasn't doctored. Is that directly from your website?
I believe so.
Great. Thank you. So I looked up a little bit of the EB5, which I'm sure you probably know. EB5 investors are able to receive a visa and potential citizenship based on investing a certain amount. Numerous individuals affiliated with, and this, can we go to the next slide? Numerous, this is, by the way, this will come from the U.S. Immigration and Customs Service Homeland Security Investigation. By the way, the redacting is federally redacted. I didn't redact this. Numerous individuals affiliated with and providing resources to terrorist organizations have entered the country through this program. One individual returned electronic components for use in improvised explosion devices. Another provided ball bearings to terrorist organizations, which were later matched to those used in IEDs. Again, federal language, not mine. EB5 visa holders have been arrested for planning terrorist attacks in the nation's capital, targeting foreign and U.S. leaders. So my question, sir, is, does it concern you that your business model may lead to terrorist activity in Brevard County?
Isn't that a joke?
I, I'm taking...
Sir, Commissioner Smith, I do not think homeland security is a joke. I'm just curious to find out, folks that want thirty million dollars, if, if they're concerned about this.
I'm not sure why the linkage to the thirty million dollars applies to this if I was not asking for a dollar.
You had EB, you had EB5 on there.
I appreciate it. Just give me a moment to answer. I'm concerned about terrorism for any amount of money, let alone thirty million dollars. We rely on the federal government and for our safety, our security. We utilize programs that the federal government sponsors. There are elected officials in Washington who come up with and modify, whether it's the EB5 program or other types of programs, to raise money and/or to facilitate individuals getting visas. I'm a little bit offended, maybe a lot offended, that you're trying to link terrorism to the grant that we're asking for.
I'm linking it to, sorry, I'm linking it to your website.
Yes.
Yeah, to be very clear, you put that on your website. I have no control on your website.
Let's be clear what we put on the website, that we utilize EB5 programs, right? We don't put on what the federal government provides in terms of terrorism.
Oh, I was just backing up, citing my information, sir.
And that's, that's great. I believe we use...
Let's move on to the next one. I'm sorry to offend you. I think you've offended many people asking for thirty million dollars of taxes, so we'll just call it a wash.
Well, I think people...
So finally, we go to, does Driftwood Capital need this contract? And can, or can we go to slide number seven? Again, I just want you to verify, please, sir, that this is your letter. Driftwood does not have the financing in place for the Westin Resort Development. In fact, you even have it underlined. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry, Don, it's like Catholic church, up, down, up, down, up, down.
You can stand up here with me if you'd like.
I'm going to section twenty point seven, and I'm not an attorney, so maybe we can get one, not a lobbyist, but an attorney in the contract. It says, "The grantee further represented this grant being paid to the grantee by the grantor under this agreement are not necess, are not necessary to make the project economically feasible." Doesn't that say the exact opposite?
Not to me, no.
Can you explain?
I would love to explain it. We don't need the grant in order to run the hotel. The grant is a indication by the county that it has the support of the county, and it is incredibly important for us to secure the financing that is required to develop the hotel. The grant is not required to develop the hotel. Remember, we're not going to get any of this dollars until we generate tourism development taxes. So up from now until the day that we get our CFO or TCO, we're not going to get a dime of money from the county, whereas we're still going to be paying property taxes and other economic benefits that are actually in the appendix of the, of the slide that I delivered to you.
Okay. So economic, economic feasible means you don't need this, you just need this for the marketing. You don't need this for the construction. I'm sorry.
I think you may have missed what I said. What we need this for is to secure the financing that is required for the property. We don't need this to operate the property.
Oh, okay, I see. So, but without this, this would not happen. Is that what you, is that?
It is going to make securing the financing incredibly difficult.
Okay, we'll get there in a minute. I'd like to go to slide nine. Again, this goes to, does Driftwood Capital need this contract? Here's a quote I've got from the Florida Today, so I don't know if this is accurate. "Tourism has come roaring back in the Space Coast, and it's only posed to get, poised to get better as corporate and group travel makes a full return. High gas prices haven't put a noticeable dent in bookings yet. There's plenty of pent-up demand for both business and leisure guests." So it sounds like things are getting good in Brevard County. My question is, do you stand, I don't know who this guy is, President Carlos Rodriguez?
That's the individual over my left shoulder.
I know. So my question is, is, he's telling, the owner of it is saying things are looking great, yet you still need the money. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
Would you like me to continue?
No, I don't. I don't know that. I want to go to slide, I want to go to slide ten here.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
I'm almost done. Yeah, I'm trying to get through this. Only a couple more slides.
It's like fifteen minutes already, Commissioner Tobias.
Yeah.
No, and I, and I'm okay to circle around again.
Two million a minute, if I was only worth it. So here's what you put up on your, your website, right? My question is, is does the twenty-seven point five internal rate of return, and I tried to look that up, I'm sorry, I'm not very good at math, is that anticipate the thirty million in, what you've put up here, does that anticipate the thirty million dollars? Or is that without the thirty million dollars?
So let me clarify what that statement specifically relates to.
Okay.
The company purchased the land for, purchased the International Palms Resort early in its, early in two thousand sixteen. I'm sorry, August two thousand sixteen, my apologies. In order to fund the development, that was funded through a vehicle that frankly is no longer making new investments. We created a new vehicle, just like we have acquisitions, we make loans on properties, and we develop, develop hotels. In order to fund the development of the new hotel, of the Westin, the old fund basically sold the property to the new fund.
Okay.
That return is indicative of what the old investors received from their work, their effort, and all of the money that they expended in order to get the project up to where it was before one of our other vehicles purchased that land from it. was before one of our other vehicles purchased that land from it.
So, those investors have already gotten a return of 27.5%? Is that correct?
Correct, those investors have.
Okay, so quite a bit of profit has been made by, 27.5%, that's pretty darn good, right?
It's a great return.
It's a great return. So, my question is, you mentioned three, and I looked this up on your website. Do you make the most off acquisition, what'd you say the second one was?
Lending.
Lending, or, or development?
It's hard to say which one, which.
On your website, I can put it up. Which one, which one do you advertise the highest?
I can tell you, from a risk adjust, everything is risk-adjusted, right?
I understand, but which one do you advertise as the highest, is my question?
The one that has the most risk.
Which, which one?
The development fund.
Okay. So, you made 27.5% on a lower-risk one, so you expect to make hopefully even more than that on the development one, is that correct?
No, when this was purchased, it was purchased as a development asset. It was always intended to be an asset that was going to be redeveloped.
So, when you have, so, let me ask, maybe this is better. When you advertise this, because you will advertise this, what will that number be?
It depends on what the costs are at the time that we're going out.
Because you're asking us for $30 million. My question is, you're gonna advertise to sell 90% of this.
Yeah, we are gonna raise 90% of the equity, yes.
Absolutely, sorry, I'm.
We're not gonna sell 90% of it.
Poor political scientist, right? So, my, my question to this is, what rate of return, we not be promising, but will you be advertising for that?
For most of our development assets, we advertise between 15% and 20%.
Okay. Thank you. And it said 20 on your website, just to be very clear. My question, and I didn't have that slide. My question is, will this $30 million increase that 15 to 20%? Or have no impact on that 15 to 20%?
It will have an impact on that.
And what, will, will it cause it to go up, or will it cause it to go down?
Well, by receiving money, it will cause the impact to go up.
Well, I don't know that. And the reason I don't know that is because it could go into your pockets instead of the investor pockets. And I'm concerned about that.
I, I, I wanna allay your concerns. The money's not going into our pockets. It is reimbursing marketing dollars that we have spent, that we've provided proof to the county manager, to the county's office.
If we can play this game over and over, that you would have spent otherwise, we're just picking up the tab. So, let's go to the next, because here's my understanding of your business model, and it's pretty nice, I think. So, you purchased this for 23 million, then you invested 14, which there's no effort there, I mean, getting through, maybe you paid the architect a lot, I got no idea. So, you got a total investment of 37 million. According to your numbers, you're gonna raise 346, so the total cost, again, your numbers are 383 million. You're gonna potentially get 30 million from this board. So, your initial investment of 37 million is allayed by 30, cutting your cost down to 7 million. So, the, what I get is the profit on 7 million for 10% ownership of the $383 million project, yours, not mine, is 447% profit. Not your investors, I'm talking yours, is, is, is that, is that accurate?
Not even close.
Not even close, it's higher?
No.
Okay. I, I appreciate, I'm just, these were all your numbers, right?
I don't think, I don't think some of those are our numbers.
You're right, some of them were from the Brevard County tax collector, so.
No, I think some of the other numbers, particularly the ones in the red, are certainly not from us.
You said you're, you said you were gonna be 10% ownership, right?
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I did 10%.
The three, the 447% profit and the only 7 million dollars invested.
I did 10% ownership of 38 million, so I did the math without you, but I, I can, I can do that.
But I think, I think, I think, sir, you're applying $30 million of a grant that potentially we will receive over 30 years.
Oh, yeah, this is, oh, yeah, to be clear, that, yeah, 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 no, 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 this, to be very clear, was with the intention that you do get the $30 million. And I don't know that you will, because I haven't spoken with anyone else, but I wanna finally go to slide.
And we're also not getting that money today, we're getting that over 30 years as we spend it. And I think what you're doing is saying 10% of 383 million is 38 million, less $30 million, you're getting to approximately 7 or 8 million, which is what you did in the red box, correct?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah. So, so, you're right, that's, that's, that's fair. Only making a million a year personally is, is not that good of a rate of return on, on 7 million, so I get it. So, I, I'm sorry, over 12 years.
I think you're missing the 7 million.
So, here's what I'm not missing. Let's go to slide 12 here. This is the last one, this came directly out of the contract here. Is this not, this is, this, this is the contract that you guys sent us to be very, Appendix C.
That is Exhibit C, which is the organizational structure, correct.
This is the one that says the 90%, you know, you're going to sell off 90% of it, is that correct?
We're going to raise equity.
Sorry.
That invests alongside of Driftwood, for which Driftwood maintains complete control over the development.
Okay. And now, help me, again, this whole idea, right, is about us providing you with a grant for marketing, is that, is that correct?
It's a grant that is being reimbursed from the marketing fund that we are required to spend marketing dollars for.
Okay, so, but you're gonna be in charge of the way this is spent?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That it also gets approved after it's spent by the county manager.
But you'd be in charge, but you'd be in charge of that, again, right?
We would be in charge of deploying the funds. We would also sit down with the county manager and review a budget on an annual basis that does an overview of how we're gonna spend the dollars.
I got it, I'm stretching this out for dramatic effect, real, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it.
I, I do too. We'd be giving you $30 million for marketing.
You would be reimbursing $1 million a year over 30 years for marketing dollars that we're spending.
What's your company called?
Driftwood.
You can't spell your damn name. Look up there at the top. You misspelled your own name. You expect us to hand over $30 million, and you put a contract where you can't spell your own name? How, how, how do you justify that? How do you justify using $30 million of taxes when you can't spell your own name? Do you really think it's responsible? Forget about the terrorists, or, you know, the fact that we're providing a benefit to one business, not another. How do you justify marketing? You got fancy lobbyists up there, you got a fancy attorney who went to the University of Florida, go Gators, but you can't spell your own name and you want $30 million? Do you wanna answer that? It's my, it's, you know, it's.
I think we got your point, Commissioner Tabia.
I'm glad you've never made a mistake.
Not on 30 million bucks. I tell you what, if I was asking someone for $30 million, I'd say, please install my name correctly. Thanks very much, I'm sorry, I realize you didn't, but you guys reviewed this one way or another, over and over and over. So, let me, let me throw this out here, because I think it's probably pretty clear where I am on this. The rest of you guys, it requires three votes. I think I'm gonna go down on this, I think that's gonna surprise everyone, but that makes each one of you appear a kingmaker. In other words, if you say, you know what, 30 million is inappropriate, let's do 25 million, they have to accept it, because it's 25 million or zero. So, I wanna let each and every one of you know, you have that power. Not gonna get my vote, but you have that power. And second of all, and, and Bob, Mr. Boger mentioned this, and actually, before Mr. Boger mentioned, he probably stole it off Commissioner Smith up here. Commissioner Smith was a strong proponent of letting the people vote. And, and, you know what? I, I'm gonna go with that suggestion here as a referendum, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that, because I was counting the people that got up here and spoke, and it was 18 to 6, and I understand two of the 18 were paid, that were for it, and it looked like at least two, potentially three of the people that were against it were paid. So, I don't, I don't know the outcome, it's not a representative sample, but why not give them that authority? Again, this is a generational, more than a generational, so why don't we put this out for referendum? It's something that, and your argument, I, I would have no problem with, I would, I would vote for that as a, as a happy medium. But I'm gonna hope that everyone, at least at a minimum, please, guys, at a minimum, because I could've gone on for a long, long time.
I think 25 minutes is enough. Let's hear from some of the other commissioners. Commissioner Pritchett?
To add in, sorry, to add in the, add in that four and a half star language at a minimum, please.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett?
Hard to follow, Commissioner Tabia. I, I do gotta say, I thought you did pretty good to the end, sir. I was kind of impressed with you maintaining a little bit of.
I apologize.
All the way to the end, I thought you actually did pretty good. A couple of thoughts. First of all, I, I want to start out with saying that everybody having different opinions here, it's all right. And it's, it went a few places sometimes where you start attacking people's character, and I don't think that's necessary. Everybody sees things a little bit differently, and, and that's all right. By the time we're done with this, we're all gonna have to live together moving forward in the community with, with what we're, we're trying to accomplish, and what's probably, I'm hoping, end up being the best thing for the community moving forward. But I did wanna start with that. I also wanna open with, I'm gonna support this, let me tell you why. First of all, the project that was being brought to us about a year or so ago, I wasn't gonna vote for. It added too much potential for the county to have problems with the convention center going south, we watched the COVID stuff. I was not gonna put this county in a position where it would cost taxpayer money to try to work through any kind of crisis moving forward. So, I, I just wasn't gonna have the county build a convention center and have to maintain the responsibility of, of keeping it going through the future. So, that was out completely. A Westin, I think, is a game changer for our community. And no offense, Cocoa Beach, you're here, but boy, Cocoa Beach needs some love. The, the streets need help. It's, it's a beautiful beach, and people say, you know, we used to be a retirement town. When I moved here, this was not a retirement town, it was the kicking place, I dream of genie, this was the place for young families to move. And I would love to see it to revamp some of these financial abilities moving forward. So, the ability to raise revenues, again, tourism's so important for us. If we have good tourism coming into the area, it alleviates the pressure off the ad valorem on the rest of us having to raise taxes. Can I ask you a question real quick to get a specific number? What the value of this building is gonna be as far as a tax base after you guys have this completed? I know it's gotta be at least 350 million, right?
Yes.
Which is an substantial increase of the amount of taxes you're gonna pay to government entities, which, which helps lower the ad valorem for, for the community. So, I'm always looking at things in, in that kind of perspective, and I, I grew up poor, so I get it, but if there's a way to raise revenues and lower costs, you're always doing better as a community. So, I'm always looking for investments that can come in, that will help the community and, and bring more money and more funding. The same thing happened a while ago with Commissioner Smith when they brought in the Blue Origin project. It was different than what had ever been done before, it brought an investment. At that time, I think you guys thought it was just gonna be like a $500 million investment, nothing's blown up to billions of dollars now at the Cape. It's brought in a lot more ability for companies to move in and really help the economy, because I don't know if you guys are old enough, but I am. We lived such a horrible time with the recession that went on when everybody moved out. So, I'm always looking for ways to keep investments coming into the community. I never lose my hunger on that, because I don't wanna live through it again, because my grandchildren moved out of the state, and I had to wait a long time for them to move back. So, the investments are important to me, the tourism dollars are very important, and that's what I love about the, the tourism ability that we have of creating new sections of tourism coming in. As Mr. Malik, you, you made such a good point, you guys don't have an ability to do anything else except tourism in your area. And here's, here's my hesitation, is I really want more stuff up in District 1, we don't have enough. And it's frustrating to me, because everybody wants to go to Cocoa Beach. So, this would've been my hesitation, is to try to put more pressure on a little bit more into North Brevard, because we still need to do this, because I think all the tax dollars still go to Cocoa Beach, doggone it. And I think that might need to be something that changes in the future, then it might need to be a better even distribution of those, those tax dollars and how we're spending them. I don't think Fiera gets anywhere near enough, and they've got the USSA, Palm Bay, I looked, I mean, they're at the bottom of the barrel down there. So, those might, things we have to look at in the future. But this is such a great project. It's almost $400 million you're investing into the community, which means it alleviates taxes off of senior citizens there, because we won't have to do as much because of new construction and these other items coming along that help boost the economy in, in the county. So, I, I am gonna do that. I'm doing my best when we're doing this not to have an emotional opinion with it, because when you get emotion and money, you make mistakes. So, just trying to look at the return on investment with this, and what's the best for the community and the best for the citizens, that's, that's my thing. Not one commissioner up here is gonna make a penny off this, not one commissioner is losing a penny off of this. I know this is what the TDC Board is comprised of, Florida statute says they have to have a dog in the fight, but the most wonderful thing, because it comes to this board for final approval, is we will be making these decisions purely based on what's good for our community and, and Cocoa Beach. And so, I'm, I'm gonna support this. Madam Chair, when we're ready, I wanna make a motion to approve this, subject to the county attorney finding that the reimbursements are eligible in legal expenses up to 30 years, $1 million per year. By the way, 30-year period of time with this is an annuity, so we're really only giving them $15.7 million in present value money, if that helps you with that a little bit, but it's a $400 million project with an incentive for our community that I think in the long term is gonna have a, a great impact on our community and our quality of life.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanna thank everybody for being here. It's been very informative. I didn't fall asleep once. And I wanna thank folks like Giles Malone and Tom Williamson and Bob Boger and the rest of you for being here, and I've spoken to a bunch of you before. I respect each and every one of you. On this particular issue, I get where you're coming from, I have a different perspective. First of all, I wanna say that I've had, I noted several people here of the public, and a lot of the public that I've spoken to outside of these walls, think that somehow their taxes are being affected. And their taxes are not being affected, it's been said before, it's been said a zillion times, but I guess it just doesn't get through to some people. Unless you, as a private citizen, have spent one night in a hotel or motel in Brevard County, none of your money is going to this project. This is tourism money, pure and simple. So, it's not the people's taxes, it's tourism taxes. So, I just wanted to get that out of the way. I made a lot of notes here, and they're somewhat disjointed. When I first heard about this project, I reflected back to when I was a freshman at the University of Miami. And the Fountain Blue had just been built, I think, five or six years before. And I didn't realize until I got there, in fact, I'm not sure, for being from, being from New Jersey, I didn't knew where Miami was. But they had a lot of ragtag hotels on the beach, a lot, that were built in the 20s, 30s, and 40s. And the Fountain Blue was a game changer. That turned the community and the economic situation in Miami Beach around. And I see, I foresee this project doing the same thing for Cocoa Beach. I think in 20 years, you'll come back and you'll see a whole different look to Cocoa Beach. And that's gonna benefit all of you business folks. It definitely will benefit you guys. As Rita mentioned, I heard a lot of these same arguments back whenever it was, 2014, 2015, when we were looking at Blue Origin. Blue Origin wanted to bring their business here, but the site that they chose needed about $8 million of site work. So, they said, well, we'll bring our business here, and they promised 300 jobs at an average salary of $89,000 a year, which is somewhere around 30 million bucks, I think. And as a businessman, I'm looking at ROI, and I'm thinking, wow, if it costs us $8 million to get a $30 million a year return, that's a pretty darn good return. But we heard all the same arguments. It was corporate welfare, it was picking winners and losers, they're gonna come here anyway, we don't have to give them anything. Well, that argument went out the door when about four years later, they were looking for property for their engine assembly plant. for property for their engine assembly plant. Now, I met with Scott Henderson, who's the VP of Operations at Blue Origin. He and I have breakfast or lunch from time to time, and he informed me that they were going to look for this engine assembly location. And I said, great, we got, I don't remember what it was now, but 10 or 5 acres adjacent to where you're building your rockets. Now, if you're going to come here anyway, doesn't that make sense? They're going to put that thing right there, and we're going to get the engine assembly building. Yeah, he said, not so fast. He said, you guys don't have a prayer. I said, really? Nope, because Greenville, South Carolina was offering them 17 million bucks to bring that engine assembly plant to them. So I said, wow, we don't have a chance. So the next time we met, I said, so did that deal go through? And he said, no, fell through. I said, really? So that means we're still in the running? He said, nope, Huntsville, Alabama stepped up and offered $35 million. So it's pay for play, folks. It's kind of like the Super Bowl. Super Bowl doesn't just wind up in Miami because they want to go there. It winds up in Miami because Miami gives them a lot of economic incentives to go there, or Los Angeles, or Minneapolis, or wherever else they want to hold the Super Bowl. Super Bowl, folks, they just sit back and say, show us the money. And all these cities step up, and they say, if you come to our town, we're going to give you this. If you come to our town, we're going to do this. Well, folks, we're in the Super Bowl here, and we want Blue Origin. We want, and I think it's, I did some calculations, it's like $216 million in salaries that we've gotten from Blue Origin in the last seven or eight years. So I spend that $8 million every day, and I bet every one of you would too. But at the time, we were the bad guys. So we're going to be the bad guys again, at least if I have anything to say about it, because this is going to be a game changer. Sometimes we have to exit our comfort zone to encourage growth in the business community, to benefit the county in general, and in this particular case, I think we're going to benefit Cocoa Beach specifically. I get it, when emotions get in the way of facts, emotions win. And that's what I hear on the street. That's what I hear on talk radio. People are angry, because we're using your tax money to benefit this one business, which we already know that's not true. I think one of the things that we're missing here too also is, we're comparing apples and oranges. We're talking about the hotels and motels that are on Cocoa Beach. You can't compare them to a four-star or four-and-a-half-star hotel. You can't. It's a whole different program, a whole different program. Somebody mentioned that Jeff or Elon Musk goes to someplace. I don't know where that is. But I can tell you that I've heard, being in this job, I rub shoulders with a lot of people up the scale of where I don't belong. And they don't come here when they want to stay. If they come here for a launch, they come for the launch and they leave. They go back to Orlando, or they go back to someplace else where they can get a four- or five-star resort hotel to stay at. Because that's the type of place that those kind of people with that kind of money, where they want to stay. That's why it's a game changer, folks, because they're going to come in here and fill up this hotel, hopefully. And all the hotel owners that we have out here, they're going to make a lot more money, because they're not going to have competition from the International Palms anymore. There's not going to be a $100 room anymore. They don't have to compete with them, because the scale's much higher now. So they can start charging more. They can start charging $200 or $300 a night and get it. And hopefully, with all the people that the extra $3 million a year is going to generate with the extra advertising impact, that's going to benefit everybody else. And while I'm on that point, right now, I think the International Palms only generates about $230,000 a year in TDT. I think that's pretty close to accurate. So if these guys start producing $2 and $3 million a year, that's a net gain, even if they get a million dollars afterwards. And they're not getting the million dollars until after they hit that $2 million mark. So there's a net gain there of about $1.7 million per year in TDT money. So TDT money's not going away, it's going up. I got a lot of other things, but I've already taken enough of your time. So I'm going to vote for it, obviously.
Okay, and I have a few things written down as well. And, you know, watching the TDC meetings over the past several meetings, it's been an interesting dynamic. I got to watch Ms. Young, who's a board member, be not allowed to ask our TDC director a question, because, let me see if I got this right. As chair, he wanted to keep staff out of this, and although you're allowed to ask the staff questions, Peter would prefer cover, I think were the words. And so, you know, the TDC for many years, and, you know, my current member that sits on the TDC has said this out loud, has been controlled by a few folks that kind of manage those dollars. And that was a constant criticism, not just as the board would get, we would also get by the newspaper, by other members observing what was going on on there. And so we changed up the board somewhat. I mean, we didn't reappoint certain members, we made sure we mixed it up a little bit. So as Commissioner Pritchett said it, we could try to get a little more representation in some of the other areas. Yes, Cocoa Beach is the center of it all, always the biggest tax collector and otherwise. But, you know, we still have to promote other areas of the county, or how are we going to help those other areas benefit? We do need to promote rocket launches. We don't want to just be another Daytona Beach. We want to be a place that welcomes families to the area. And so as much as we'd like to have, you know, girls in bikinis selling sex and spending our marketing dollars that way, I would prefer that, you know, we have some other decision-makers in this mix. Because, again, quoted straight from the 25th of May meeting, and I quote from a TDC board member, you've all heard for years now that, sitting on various committees in the last two years, sitting on this board, that I don't agree with how we market our area. We do it politically. This is our TDC chair. We split it up, and I don't actually agree with the representation for Westwood, excuse me, Driftwood, this is verbatim. That is, it would be great if we could all keep a portion of the bed tax and market our own properties. I'd be in favor of it, of doing it myself. Because for political reasons, we split up the bed tax and how we market it. So again, you have your own TDC board members who do not believe in their own marketing plan and believe that our TDC director, who's professional, I think everyone would attest to up here, and we have an advertising and marketing committee, has said that we're doing a good job with those marketing dollars, but we're still criticized. So how does the board vote against a company or an entity having some control over just the marketing dollars? That is after that pot of money, and I think, you know, it's been said here multiple times, would strictly come out of marketing, would not come out of the zoo, would not come out of programmings. I mean, all these other private entities are entitled to grants. Hell, we granted $100,000 to an airshow that didn't even justify where and how they're going to spend their money, because it's an airshow, and airshows generate all kinds of tourism. Yes, that's true. But what we didn't ask is, what are you going to do with that $100,000? The board said yes, and it was because it was pushed by the sitting commissioner at the time that was on that board. Thank you, Ms. Young, for having the courage to speak up against that and to say, what are you doing? How are you going to spend this money? And I think it was, you know, maybe five, seven slides of, oh, well, we donate to charity too, which their 990 said otherwise. And we've given that promoter of that airshow money twice. Yeah, it's $100,000, it's not 30 million, but to say that they're perfect stewards of the TDC monies is just not fact. By design, that board is set up as a big conflict. A board full of hoteliers who directly benefit, and each one has their own direct benefit. You know, and I heard how Driftwood is criticized, you know, the deepest pockets, the richest guys. Well, they're a group of investors, so criticize them for coming up with a smart business model? And I think it's been said that they've got a smart business model. I would beg to say that a lot of people in opposition of this project or in opposition of this proposal probably make money, more money than many of those singular investors that are part of Driftwood. So I'm willing to take a good look at this, you know, and probably mainly because, not just because I think it's a good idea, if the main players of the TDC don't believe that the board itself is doing a good job with the marketing, why not let this entity, and I would beg to say that, you know, Weston Resorts and their numerous hotels are probably pretty much experts on marketing themselves, because they all want to make money as well. So I'm okay with this. Okay, because they're going to remit the tax back to the TDC, they have to show proof of advertising, they're going to advertise the Space Coast. We have a legal opinion from our sitting interim county attorney. We had a legal opinion from our prior county attorney that this was a legal action. And so I have faith that what we're doing is legal. I mean, and I'll just make this one last point. We talk about private entities benefiting. We do that every time we give a grant to any entity for any project, any, you know, race, any airshow, any tournament. All of those are most, more often than not, for-profit or not-for-profit, which, you know, is a trickier way of saying for-profit. So I don't like the misrepresentation. I don't like the campaign that was strictly just against this. I think it's kind of strange that Commissioner Tabaya, with all due respect, you suggest that we put this on the ballot when, you know, you're not going to support eels going on the ballot for environmentally endangered lands in all likelihood, and you would suggest that this go on the ballot. I'm a little baffled by that. And you also don't want the school board tax item on the ballot as well. So I'm a little surprised that you would suggest that we go to ballot for this. But I'll leave it at that. I mean, I'm happy to, I think we have a motion in a second.
Second, yes.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm done arguing this. I appreciate, I noticed where everyone is, and I may not agree, but I respect everyone's opinion up here and those that spoke. I just want to go back to the whereas clause, what I asked before. The sixth whereas clause says, it's just contractual here, I'm not, guarantee is proposing a construct, a Weston flag hotel, this is what it currently says, Brevard County, of a new Weston Cocoa Beach Resort and Spa of approximately 800,000 feet of mixed-use destination resort anchored by a four-and-a-half-star, 502 key hotel. I just want that in Section 217, so I would ask, at a minimum here, please, that we add Weston Cocoa Beach. All we have to do, all the underline I have is with a minimum of four-and-a-half stars as rated by the Forbes Travel Guide or its successor. They're already guaranteeing it in the successor. I would just ask that the current hotel has what they're guaranteeing in the successor. That's the only thing I'm asking. It's one, the addition on 217 would simply be with a minimum of four-and-a-half stars as rated by Forbes Travel Guide or its successor, what they already have in 217. Can I put it, Madam, can I put it on the overhead?
Sure, yeah, because I don't think anybody else has had the benefit of seeing it.
Sorry. Thank you.
Can we have somebody come up? See if you take issue with this.
Commissioner, we have absolutely no issue with this. It's actually incorporated by reference. So if you want to state it again, we have no objection to state it again, but it is incorporated by reference.
Well, that is so generous and kind of you after the way I treated you. I greatly, I greatly appreciate that.
So you admit you were a five-year-old, or?
Five-year-olds can spell their name. My me-may can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You've kept us on our toes up here, and the chair actually was 100% correct when she said you came up with a novel, you came up with a novel approach. So hats off, you won this one, and thank you for doing this. It's very gracious of you.
Thank you, and again, I actually think it's a win for the county, more than it's a win for us. But I do appreciate it.
And I know we talked about this when we met last week. I look forward to your participation in the community, as a member of the community, as a, not a financial contributor, but as a member of the chamber, as a member of boards. I mean, I think that that would show that you're supporting the community, because you're being supported by the tax.
Very much so. We're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I also want to mention, you're going to be a large investor into the area. It might not be a bad idea for you to serve on the TDC board moving forward. And everybody coming forth these...
We would welcome the opportunity.
Actually, one of the gentlemen came up, I'd kind of been toying around the idea too, because there's so much discrepancy in how we spend marketing, that I know we wouldn't pull it off today and take a lot of thought, but almost turn in the marketing over to you guys for Brevard County and see what you could come up with.
Oh, God.
I think that's something we would welcome the opportunity to discuss with you.
I saw, have a little fun back on that. But I do want to say, you know, talking about recession, this has a built-in protection for Brevard County. We run into trouble, you're not going to get the money.
Unless we generate it.
I know, so it's really, it's really a good contract moving forward. I just want to thank you for that. I do want to thank our TDC board for all they do. It isn't their fault that they're all hotelers, not a bad thing, but it does, it is kind of hard to have arms-laid transaction on business ideas when you are the sole person making money off those decisions. But this shows this works. It comes before an elected body that doesn't have financial interest to make decisions for the community, respect the opinions that come from the board. I think moving forward, I'm going to work on getting a little more diversity. I realize, sitting up there, I don't have any District One representation, and so I'm going to be working to make a few changes with that. And Commissioner Tabaya, I'm thankful today you didn't bring up taking all the money and putting it into rows from TDC, so appreciate that too, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can whoever made the motion, could it contemplate the change that was agreed?
I agree to the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
So you agree to the second?
My second best, too.
Okay, I think we've belabored this enough, and, all right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-1. Surprised we didn't have opposition from the people who didn't want us to vote on District Two items.
Yeah, was he, is he still here?
I don't know. I think so, I think he spoke on it.
Yeah, he's still here.
John, you know there's not any African-American people on that board, by the way.
Yeah. There isn't. No minorities over Medina.
It's a work in progress.
Don't we only get one appointment? Don't, us as individuals?
I think so, yeah. Mine's not going to be you.
Yours is who?
Giles.
Oh, you didn't even get an American.
Huh? Oh, my God, we're going to talk about, can we take five?
Yes.
We're going to take a quick five-to-seven minute break so the room can clear and we can get...
Thank you, sorry, man.
All right, moving on to item I-2. Jerry, you want to introduce this?
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Item I-2 is the county attorney agreement prior board meeting. The Board had directed that the Chair and myself and Jill Hayes, Budget Director, sit down and negotiate an agreement, if possible, with the, the prior candidate for county attorney's position, Mr. Morris Richardson. We had that meeting last week, and we have, I believe, reached a successful negotiation on that agreement. You have that in front of you now, and we're back to the Board for your blessing and approval on that agreement.
All right. Obviously, negotiations went very well. You want to come up, Morris?
Yes, thank you.
Are you satisfied with the agreement?
Yes, I'm satisfied with the agreement, thank you.
Okay. Has the Commission had a chance to review? Have any questions? Commissioner Tabaya?
I'd like to win one up here, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract as written with Morris Richardson as, as the new county attorney.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second, and I just want to welcome you aboard, welcome you back to the county. You were my first choice right from the beginning, and I won't say I told you so, Commissioner Tabaya, but, I mean, Abby was great when she was here, so I'm not, that's not any knock on her. I just knew your talent, I knew your honesty and integrity, and I look forward to working with you, and I promise that every meeting is not like this. Sometimes we get a little squirrely up here, but for the most part, we're pretty easy to work with. So welcome aboard, and I congratulate you, because I think that this is the perfect fit for you and the perfect fit for us. So I'm really excited about having you on board.
Well, thank you all, and if, if I could say just a few words...
Absolutely.
You're welcome to put me on the clock. Chair Zanka, if you'd like. Theodore Roosevelt said, "Far and away, the best prize that life offers is the chance to do work, work hard at work worth doing." So thank you, Commissioners, for the chance to work hard at work worth doing here at the county. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm excited to once again serve this Board and the people of Brevard County. Right now, I'm focused on serving the great city of West Melbourne in my remaining time there. West Melbourne has an amazing city council, talented committee staff, and I'm very thankful for the seven years of good work we were able to do together. I do look forward to rejoining Frank and the awesome Brevard County government team here, and to Christie and the dedicated staff in the county attorney's office and attorneys there. Let's go. So again, Commissioners, thank you.
Awesome, September 1st, correct?
September 5th.
September 5th, okay.
May I jump in real quick?
It's a Monday.
I just want to piggyback with Chair Zanka that I was also, you were my first choice too. So I, you interviewed so well, you know...
I feel so like you, Bert.
We are. You know the law, you communicate well. I'm very excited to have you on board in this position. Like, I want to reiterate when Commissioner Zanka just said, you know, Ms. Abby did great, and I hope she's doing well through her new job opportunity. I think you're just going to help bring us to a whole other level. And I got to say, Ms. Christie is doing a great job jumping in, and we threw her in the fire fast, so...
You sure did.
Come as quickly as you can, be studied up, and be ready to hit the ground running, which I know you are. Thank you, sir.
Thank all of you.
And I just want to remark that understandably, he's going to probably be consulted, at least on some level, from West Melbourne as they transition their new attorney in and have to deal with issues, but no doubt, you'll be a little busier in the beginning because you'll be trying to balance and juggle both, but I know you'll be up to the task.
Thank you, and I appreciate that leeway to, to help West Melbourne transition in every way possible.
Yes. And I would apologize to West Melbourne, but I won't. I'm happy to have you on board.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Okay, Madam Chair. Commissioner Smith and I were wrong. More importantly, the women were correct. I just want to make a point that Commissioner Smith and I were wrong in select, we selected a woman and we were still wrong. So I just don't think there's anything we can do, but I, I, I'm happy where we are. I greatly appreciate you, you coming back, and I greatly look forward to it, and, one more time, the Chair was 100% correct, and, and, and I was not.
Commissioner Tabaya, if you guys would just vote with the women, I think you wouldn't have any problems moving forward.
Commissioner Smith?
Wise counsel. Lesson learned. Go with the women. Morris and I, we go back to working together when I first took office, and he and I had a long discussion after we made the decision to pick Abby, and he and I are on the same page. So I'm glad you're back.
You made a great choice before with the best information you had, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity now, so.
And to give them a little cover, I don't think it was an easy decision for them, even though they were incorrect. I don't think, I just saw them saying that out loud more than once. I think, I think it was a difficult decision for them. It wasn't like you were so far, you know, their second. It was, it was difficult position for them to be in as well. So congratulations, and we're the winners, so, and so is Brevard County.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with this, thank you. And with this, Commissioner Tabaya had expressed some desire to get the county manager's contract up to par with the average, you know, based on our population and based on our tax base. So if the Board is agreeable, I guess we can work with Jerry Visco and bring back a revised contract for Mr. Abate. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is that okay with you, Mr. Abate?
Sure.
Probably should have asked you before we voted.
That's fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So it's either going to come from one of us up on the dais, or the, I mean, or, or the county attorney, or the county attorney's office, or the county manager's office. It looks, it might look a little self-serving if the, it's coming from one of the other two. Do you think it should come from one of the district offices?
It could.
I mean, because if, if we're not putting it there, if we're directing staff to do it, it comes back...
Okay. Do you want to put it on?
I'd be more than willing to. I, I'll support whoever puts it up there. I just don't want to put, you know, staff in an awkward position that they're putting on a raise for their own, their own self or their boss.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll be more than willing to put it on the agenda next week.
Okay. Okay. I think there's some legalese that Mr. Morris had in his contract, and it'd probably be the annual salary, or just mainly the two main points.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. Item I-3 was removed. Moving on to J-1.
Commissioners, J-1 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to, to accept and authorize the Chair to execute a donation and capital contribution reimbursement agreement for Fire Station 49 between the Viera Company and Brevard County. This agreement obligates the developer to provide property and to, and for the cost of construction of the fire station, along with the equipment and the apparatuses required for that station, which then Brevard County will reimburse the developer with fire impact fees in the amount of $2,635,876. This obligation allows the satisfaction of the Viera DRI Development Order Condition 101. We have, in looking at this, we have found that we had two scribners errors that we're asking the Board to incorporate into the document to correct. First one would be Page 21. We had Abby, George Ambie is the county attorney, and we made the correction now for Christine Sharavich. And then the second one is on Exhibit I. We're asking for the inclusion there on the heading to say budgeted amount, which ties it back to Page 15, Section 8 of the agreement. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commission?
Take a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith for approval, second by Commissioner Tabaya. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J-2 was removed. Moving on to item J-3. Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is dealing with athletic fields, and first and foremost, I want to make it clear that I'm not advocating for shutting down these athletic fields or cutting park access one bit. These fields will continue to exist for public use regardless of how we vote in the future. And any and all realized savings, it's my intention, would stay with parks. Funds will be used to update and improve the facilities that the county is directly responsible for. I think it's important to understand, first and foremost, that we have numerous parks, and we have 68 vacancies currently in Parks and Rec Department. Employees are tasked with maintaining the Brevard County Public School athletic fields, could be tending to our own parks, and filling some of those voids that we have due to low staffing. What is this about? In 2018, October, I made a mistake of voting for a five-year extension on the joint use agreement between Brevard County and Brevard County Public Schools regarding the eight athletic fields that were mentioned in the agenda report. That's Gibson Complex, Jefferson Middle, Tropical Elementary, Hoover Middle, Audubon Elementary, M.I.L.A. Elementary, Gemini Elementary, and Sun Tree Elementary. Four years later, I'm only slightly wise... I'm only slightly wiser and realized that this was a drain on the county, on county resources. The agenda report in 2018 showed that the estimated fiscal impact was $704,000 annually. However, in 2021, the fiscal impact had grown to 801,647, with an additional $350,000 spent in capital expenses. Let me be very, very clear here. I'm not trying to pull a fast one on anyone. Quite the opposite. I'm not even going to make a motion at the end of this. I would just like to get the temperature of the rest of the board. I'd like to bring back this in October, when the agreement is 12 months out from expiring, so that both parties have plenty of time to make any necessary changes should Brevard, should the board decide not to extend this agreement. This will also give the rec partners over a year to enter into agreements with BPS. According to Representative Randy Fine, Brevard County Public Schools is seeing an additional $24.2 million increase in funding to offset 10.4 million increase in retirement and the $15 an hour impact. At the same time, over the past four years, the student enrollment has actually declined. And most importantly, Brevard County Public Schools is not subject to the same cap that we are. So, to be very clear, we don't have the, we don't have the staff in order to maintain Brevard County parks, as well as the parks of Brevard County Public Schools. I would just like our full focus to be on the parks that we are solely responsible for, and thus, give Brevard County Public Schools ample time to make arrangements, so they can take over those fields. Again, I'm not advocating cutting one penny from parks, or one FTE. I'm just, I'm sure many of you guys have heard that certain parks in your district are need of a little love, and this is a way that we could not increase taxes, but just focus our labor on the parks that we are solely responsible for. So, just wanted to hear where everyone was on this. Again, this is $800,000 per year, so we could have a pretty tremendous impact on the mini parks that, that folks, that folks enjoy in Brevard County. I'd like to hear where everyone is on this. And the last thing, like I said, was want to blindside another taxing authority, so they have time to make plans.
I have questions.
Mary Ellen? As far as these parks go, there's school, we have school parks, and we have agreements with them. Is this to support the leagues?
Correct.
Okay. Are the schools using these fields, or is it the leagues?
The schools are using them during school operating hours, and the leagues are using them after hours during Monday to Friday, and on the weekends.
And what do you think happens if we stop, say, we stop maintaining those fields or whatever, what happens to the leagues? Do they start moving, shifting to other parks that aren't school parks? I'm not, I'm not sure how we support the leagues.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Or what you think would be the result if we stopped doing this?
There could be a couple of options. They might negotiate with the school directly, or they might look to go to other parks that we have, but we, we really don't have any space in our parks.
Now, do the league, do we receive any funding from the leagues?
They pay light fees. They pay for the lights that they use, the electricity for the lights.
We're paying it as well?
The leagues pay for the light fees.
Okay. But, we're not profiting off of that?
No, no.
And able to use that towards the maintenance?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a pass-through cost.
Okay. And I knew the answers to some of that. I just wanted to hear you say it as well. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, a question I'm going to have is if we're looking to make some changes with this is, first of all, I'd want to know each of these schools, which area they're located in, what type of activities they're, they're having, how many different children are affected. I remember I, yesterday with our conversation, you said it's total about 3,100 children altogether. So, these things are going to weigh into it. Let me ask you a quick question, Ms. Donner. Does the school give us any funds to keep these maintained at all, or is that just our trade-out for being able to use this for, for parks activities?
The school does not provide any funding for us to maintain these facilities.
Okay. And do we have to give the school any money to utilize these facilities for the park programs?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, my question would be is, if we're trying to get some data, is where these schools are located? Because I see the Gibson, and that's kind of in a target area in my community, and I happen to know that complex is heavily used by children. So, that, that's going to be a real tough one for me to not make available for the children with what you guys do. We spend a lot of time out there with, with the kids. And then, the, the costs that you think would break down to each one of these, and how many kids we're actually servicing for the area. So, if it's a good partnership with the school, I'm, oh, never got a chart, I'm probably okay with it. So, this is the data I'm going to be looking for.
Okay.
I guess probably the question lies, where does the burden of that cost fall? Does it fall with the school board who has the fields, or does it fall with the board?
Because we're using it.
But are we using it if it's the school's fields? So, I guess that's the question of whether or not, who should be supporting those leagues, essentially. Commissioner Tabia?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And Ms. Donner, I'm going to ask you a question I don't know the answer to, so it's a little scary. Of the phone calls you get in complaints, I know the phone calls I get in complaints, but the phone call you get in complaints, do they, do they tend to be the Brevard County parks, or do they tend to be, you know, these parks right here? As far as disrepair, not maintaining them to a decent standard? What's the volume?
I would say they're probably equal.
Okay, and I'm, that's, that's good. There are eight parks listed here. How many parks does Brevard County have?
117.
Okay, so eight parks generate about the exact same amount of traffic to your and your offices as, as the 117 other parks. Close, I'm not going to public record or request you, but is it fair to say it's somewhat close? Is it fair to say disproportionate amount?
Yeah, yes. So, I would say that that could be a fair statement, but those fields are used more, so that in there lies the difference.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, and the complaints I've heard actually are one of these that happen to be located in your district, but parents are having concerns about how the fields are maintained. And these are recreation fields, these aren't tournament fields. So, they're just not up to the standards that they would hope, which puts us in a, the county in a tough position, because it's very difficult to us to make a capital expense in a park that is not ours. You wouldn't add an addition onto a house that you are renting. It just doesn't make sense. But-
You're talking about Hoover?
Um, yeah, I'm talking about Hoover. We, yes, but we spent about 300, how much did we spend? 300 and-
50.
We spent $350,000 on sod. And, but that cleared up the situ, is-
Sod and irrigation.
Sod and irrigation. That cleared up the situation, did it not?
It's still growing.
And-
And yes, we are anticipating it will alleviate that situation.
And I think the school board's position is, we're not using those fields. It's you guys using the fields.
And, and, and we are, because we have contracts with the leagues. But, those same individuals can have contract, those same leagues can have contracts with the schools.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I'm not even saying I disagree with it, but what I'm saying is, is that was sort of, at least the impression that I had, was that the leagues are using the fields, we don't use them at all.
Yep. My, my whole thing is to be 100, and I said this at the beginning, I'll say it again. I don't want to take any of them, this money and cut taxes. I don't want to take any of this money and build roads. I want to take this money and put it into the parks that are, that are property of Brevard County. So, I don't want to move one FTE, I don't want to move $1. I want to be able to say to those parents that I understand your concern. That's a Brevard County park, and I can call Mary Ellen and say, hey, maybe we can put some capital expense in that sunshade, new gym equipment, whatever the heck, a dog park, whatever the case may be. It's very difficult when a parent calls, and you have to explain to them, well, you know, this is actually Brevard County Public School, but we maintain it. And it gets very complicated, the whole system. So, my intent was, Brevard County manages the parks, the 117 that we have, and Brevard County Public Schools that has a fund, a half penny fund for capital expense, that they maintain these parks. Again, if they want to charge, more power to them. But, it just doesn't make sense for us to make capital expenses on land that's, that's not ours. We wouldn't do it as renters. I don't think we should do it as, as taxpayers. This is not cutting anything. Brevard County Public Schools can pick up the tab in order to do it. Again, it's 800,000. They've got, they've got a budget of well over a billion dollars.
And that's your best argument, is that it's not our capital. It's theirs, yeah.
Yeah, but we've spent 300 and-
I know.
Yeah.
I'm willing to look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm willing to look at it. But my, when I'm listening to you, I'm thinking, we don't have, to use your analogy, if, if I'm not paying rent on the house, you just used the analogy that if somebody's renting, you're not going to pay to put an addition on a house that you're renting. But, we're not, we're not really renting this, the, we don't own the fields. All we're doing is using, using the field. So, it's a user, it's a user fee.
That's exactly what rent is, right? You don't own the home.
I know. So, it's a user fee. So, that's really what we're doing here. It's, it's a user fee. We don't pay the user fee, we don't get to use the field.
And, and my argument is that those individuals can contract with Brevard County Public Schools for that user fee. We're, we're, we're stuck in the middle here, right? And it's-
So, you're suggesting that the leagues should cover that 800,000?
Or Brevard County Public Schools. Again, they have a, they have a more than a billion dollar budget. We have 117 other, and I didn't know that number, other parks to maintain. Again, this would stay 100% in Brevard County parks, hopefully, with this. But, I don't, I'm not planning on moving one penny anywhere else. I just want to be able to say, hey, we'll have Brevard County Public Schools manage their parks, and we'll manage, and we'll manage ours.
Mary Ellen, the $800,000 that's mentioned here annually, is, is that a hard and fast number, year after year, or does this just take into account the 300,000 that we spent on that one field?
That 801 does not take into consideration the 350,000 capital improvement.
So, we're paying $100,000 per field, basically, if we're only renting eight fields?
Yes, sir.
And what are we paying for the other 117 that we operate?
Not all the other parks are athletic fields. They're, they're passive parks, they're active parks, they're parks like Vieira.
Like boat ramps and things like that.
Boat ramps. It varies.
Okay. Well, certainly something to think about.
I have two cards on this, too.
Okay, and, and to be clear, this doesn't end until October 2023?
October 13th, 2023 is the contract with the school district.
But I thought it would be only fair if we are going to say to the Brevard County Public Schools, we don't drop at the last second. So, I thought-
There is a provision in here for 12 months' notice.
And I don't want to end it early. Let me, because I voted for this. I would wanted to give Brevard County Public Schools, in October, should we go through this, a full year to make that transition. So, I'm not asking for a vote. I'm just asking to see where the board was on this.
I'm happy to look at it.
Thanks.
All right, Marcus Herman?
Sure.
Ms. Donner, if we were to pull out of this areas, do we have other fields that these children would be able to move over into for activities?
Not at this time.
So, if Brevard County's schools just kind of said, we ain't doing anything outside of school era hours, we, we're, this is something we got to consider. Okay, thanks.
I recognize this is just a discussion, and frankly, I appreciate some of the questions you're asking, because it's some of my concerns. But, there's one thing that I think that's missing here. As a taxpayer in Merritt Island, there was a referendum, I believe, back in 2000, and the taxpayers of Merritt Island overwhelmingly voted to redo these parks and pay for the maintenance in perpetuity. We're still paying that tax, and I don't believe that tax goes away until 2026, at the earliest. So, with that said, in my mind, to then take the responsibility of upkeep of these taxes, upkeep of these parks, and give them to the school board, and then keep that tax from the Merritt Island residents and use it anywhere in District 2, I just think that's a misrepresentation, or misuse of, of the tax dollars. As a person who has spent a lot of time volunteering, I ran a 500-plus soccer league as the president of the league. What I see happening is the school board having to come before these different organizations, and Myla, big baseball in Lassie League, Jefferson, midget football, or Pop Warner Football. These leagues struggle to find funds, and what's going to happen is, the school board's going to ask for more money to take care of them. If we're not taking care of them, the people in Merritt Island aren't paying for them anymore. And then, what's going to, so they're going to pay more, which in turn is like a tax, to the same people that have already decided they wanted to pay that tax in the first place. So, I can't speak to all the parks, but I can speak to the ones in Merritt Island specifically, at least those, those couple there, that we paid specifically for those parks for a reason. And it's for such leagues, for the, for the youth to be able to, to grow. So, I would request that you consider these points and deny this plan, or get a lot sharper with it. Okay?
Thank you. Jenna Scott?
Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Tabia, for bringing this up, because it sort of feels like a follow-up from one of my previous comments. I'm not for or against any of this, but I just feel that the public deserves transparency. These interlocal agreements are created in the dark ages, and they seldom come to light, even to the extent that you discussed them here this morning. And aside for, well, maybe you could tell me, do the taxpayers of Brevard own Brevard Public School property? Yes or no? Because we are sort of treated like we're not taxpayers and own the school board properties. I would say that this is just a tip of the iceberg, because what, what I was intended with my initial comments two or three months ago was to, just for the, you know, public enlightenment. For example, in the municipalities, Cocoa Beach spends a tremendous amount of money, maintain, well, back in the day, I would say 30 years ago, maybe, the interlocal agreement was to take over all the school board athletic fields, and we've been maintaining them for 30 years. This is the first year, this past year, that they gave us a dime to, toward maintaining those fields. So, the taxpayers get taxed more than once for the same thing. We pay Cocoa Beach. Cocoa Beach transfers money or monetary value to another taxing authority. I'm against that. About 10 years ago, the two elementary schools, they needed playground equipment, and the school board said they had no money. Cocoa Beach taxpayers paid almost $100,000 for two elementary school complete playgrounds. I just think that the school board has taxing authority. They should collect the money, pay their own bill, and then sort it out after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for the cards. Commissioner Pritchett? Is that all light? Okay. So, do you need direction?
No.
Are you asking for something specific? I think you have consensus that it's something that at least we should look at.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, Ms. Donner. I just didn't want to go through all of this stuff if there wasn't board support. So, we'll do a little more research, get stuff back, and maybe have some sort of dialogue between Mary Ellen and the school board, and find out if they're steadfast, saying absolutely no. I hope that's not the case, because maybe you can give us some direction as to which parks, you know, where those parks would be, and to take off any concern. And I don't know that taxing authority. I have absolutely no idea. But, I certainly would hope that these resources would go to the districts that they were locate, located in, so the parks, closed parks would receive the funds. I'm not trying to centralize this 800,000 in District 3 by, by no means. I certainly would want it to stay in the, in the same area. I'd just rather see it spent on funds of Brevard County, not Brevard County Public Schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Item J-4 was removed. Item J-5?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Thank you. This is the problem when you give us a month off. Thank you. This is the problem when you give us a month off, you know, the, I'm dealing, I've got an issue with PACE. So, with your indulgence, may I go through some concerns with PACE, that program that was approved on the board, by the board on March 20...
As long as you don't talk about terrorists or spelling errors.
There's no terrorists in here.
I'm good.
Okay. On March 20, 2018, the board passed resolution enacting the Property Assessment Clean Energy PACE Program by a vote of four to one. Having seen plenty of issues with the program since 2018, I attempted to repeal the PACE program in July 2021 due to some consumer protection concerns. Commissioner Pritchett wisely stated, and I quote, "If a person has to take out a tax lien to do something because nobody will give them a loan, it kind of shows they cannot pay it back." She went on to say, "Voted for this last time, wish she had not, will not support continuing doing this." Okay? During the same period, same meeting, Y-Green Representative Kate Westner agreed to a six-month period to develop and implement adequate consumer protection of the program. Their own PACE lobbyist agreed, and I quote, "If in six months, people are still being deceived, then this program might need to be reconsidered." Again, that was their own paid lobbyist. I'm disappointed to say, no legislative action has passed to better protect citizens from the PACE program. I asked for this period, so this is on my shoulders. And my, I would say, action, but my inaction and trust of the industry have had some deleterious effects on some folks. So, I've got some slides here so you can see what is hanging over my head here. Great. Here's the first one. This was an elderly widow filed on her taxes, asked for an HVAC replacement. That HVAC, I know very little about HVAC, but it seems like $15,316 on a value of a home at $34,000. In other words, HVAC was 44% of the value on her home. Her tax bill went up 155%. So, on the right-hand side, I had the lien process, and there will be the issuing of a tax certificate. If this continues, this elderly widow will be out of a house because of this PACE program, again, because of something of inaction of me. So, let's go to another one, Slide 2. My point is, this happens quite a bit. Here's a disabled veteran. This person decided to get some solar PV, which sounds really cool. Unfortunately, that solar was $51,606. The value of the home is 201. In other words, the solar was about 26% of the value of the home. The tax bill went from $1,696 to all the way up to $3,288. In other words, an increase of 93.85%.
Does it say on there what, how many panels they got, or how many?
No, it was not on the, it was not on the contract. But anyway, issuing of a tax certificate is the step. Number three, I've got a disabled citizen. Are we on three now? Great. Not great. This is bad. The product, an attic insulation and duct system. I'm not sure, quite sure what that is. But either way, the project was $23,605. The value of the home was 128,000. In other words, it was 18% of the home's value. The tax bill increased 74.38%. We are past the issuing of a tax certificate on this one. The owner will most likely, or potentially could lose the house in the next 12 months, again, because of my inaction. Here's a D1 citizen. Now, this one's kind of interesting. They got a PACE loan on some energy-efficient shingles. What is interesting about energy-efficient shingles is, according to the website, they last 15 years. But the annual PACE assessment lasts 30 years. So, in other words, they'll be paying 15 years off of shingles that are no longer good, that they have to get replaced in order to get insurance. But anyway, the overall project was about 30,000. The home value was 84,000. In other words, the shingles were 36% of the home's value. The tax, the tax went up 109%. And I know what you're saying, but they're energy-efficient shingles. That's the way I'm sure they were sold. So, I looked up the annual savings of energy-efficient shingles. I'd never heard of that. It is somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 to 150 a year. So, in other words, this person will save, wait for it, 2,000 bucks on energy-efficient shingles, but they will end up paying 30,000 bucks. That was a good salesman there. Either way, unfortunately, the issuing of tax certificate of this District 1 resident has been in here. Here's one that is a D5, and this one was, this one blew me away, windows. I know they're expensive, but this is a little bit over the top. This is a nice house in D5, and the project cost was 130, those must be some really nice windows, $134,811. This home value is $360,000. In other words, 38% of the home is windows. I've built a few houses in my time, and windows are expensive, but they're not 38% of the home's value. Here's where this gets scary. The tax bill increased from $4,400 to 14,000. This guy has a, or woman, I don't know, has a tax bill, and I have all the tax debt. I just, for these folks' protection, I took off the address, but I have all this stuff. I'd be more than willing to share. It went up 221.87%. Again, I've got a house here of $360,000 of value, and it has a tax bill now of $14,167. An issuing of a tax certificate will be going up. And what's extremely, extremely important is, remember, this is attached to the tax statement. This isn't going bad on a loan. This is attached to the tax bill. So, these folks will lose their home. And if that wasn't bad, I've got a nonprofit Christian church up here that got a PACE loan, a PACE loan of about $65,000. The value of this structure is 125,000. In other words, it's about half. So, it's all new assessment. So, it's $1,665 from zero. This is a church that will be going under, and people won't have a place to worship, again, on my watch, unfortunately, and ending with something at home, a D3 resident. The annual PACE assessment for some solar PV was, sorry, the total assessment for the solar PV on this house right here was $53,149. The home value is 111,000. In other words, almost half of the home is solar. It's too late on this one. The owner lost the home. These are decisions that came about because of my inaction. And I can't fix the past. I trusted some highly-paid lobbyists, and now some folks are out of homes. It's my fault. It's, and I just don't want this to go forward. It's not just me. The Truth in Lending Act, which applies to mortgages and other large financial agreements, does not currently apply to PACE. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and FHA will not even finance mortgages for homes with PACE loans. The consumer protections that Y-Green previously identified as being in place have been shown to be insufficient and ineffective by the National Consumer Law Center. The National Consumer Law Center particularly opposes the way in which PACE administrators target low-income households. As you saw, there are a number of houses that were below that $120,000 threshold. And at a more, this is not unique. That's the bad part. At a more local level, Hillsborough and Hernando County have both ended their PACE programs because of this lack of consumer protection. According to the Brevard County Tax Collector, as of June 2, 2022, there are 31 delinquent accounts in Brevard County alone. This consists of 24 separate consumers, six in D1, two in D2, nine in D3, one in D4, six in D5. 70% of PACE loans in the state of Florida are used for hurricane mitigation measures, which do not provide homeowners with a cost-saving measure that PACE usually advertised. The majority, as you saw, are for roofing or solar, non-advalorm PACE assessment in our county range, anywhere from 765, this is per annum, to over 6,700. I could go on and on and on, but due to overwhelming risk to consumers and abhorrent lack of accountability from PACE administrators, I urge the board to repeal the PACE program. In order to do that, we have to adopt a motion, which was attached, and it repeals Resolution 18040 regarding the Property Assessment Clean Energy Program and directing county personnel to take any necessary steps in furthering of the purpose of the said resolution. There are three or four of these companies. We gave them each a resolution. So, the one that I have here would actually do away with any of them. The contracts require, I think, 60 or 90 days. That's included in this sort of contract. Clearly, they weren't interested in consumer protection. Again, this is all on me because I'm the one that believed there would be consumer protections in place, and you can see the results of my inaction, Madam Chair. So, that's the motion. I'd be more than willing to answer any questions or give you specific data on any of the ones that I just mentioned.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't think it's on you, Commissioner Tobias. I think it's on the people that signed the contracts. How can you be in a house and have some salesman come by and tell you that they're going to give you solar panels for $50,000 when you can buy about a 15,000-watt unit for about $15,000? There's got to be some responsibility for the homeowner. I mean, if people are that lax or that trusting, and I'm guessing that a lot from the looks of the houses, most of these people were probably over 50. So, how do you get 50 years, get to be 50 years old or older and not make responsible decisions? It's, I'm not saying that you're wrong. It's just, that's what raises questions for me. I mean, those numbers were crazy. Now, the windows, if they had Anderson Windows, and it's a $300,000 house, that's probably about the right number.
No.
But they're 30-year, they're 30-year warranty windows.
Madam Chair?
I think that number's a bit high on the windows.
Yeah.
Because I have them on my house.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith, you bring up some very, very valid points. And if this was a traditional mortgage, you would be 100% correct, or even a second mortgage. But the only reason PACE is allowed to act in Brevard County is because we allowed them to act in Brevard County. If it wouldn't been for our actions, they wouldn't be in these situations. So, we, as a board, and by the way, this came before the legislature, and I voted against it, and it came before the board, and I voted against it. I just wrongfully believed in the paid lobbyists who said that they would put some consumer protection. And they claimed they tried, but they didn't get anything at the federal level. And you saw the major lending institutions won't do it. They didn't do it at the state level, and they didn't do it here. So, for those reasons, and forget about, for the reasons of the people that will not be in homes right now, I have to ask that we do away with this because it's our action. Again, we're the ones that allowed this. The legislature was smart enough to say, by the way, we're not going to do this across the state. The county has to make a determination that you want these folks to act in your area. We decided yes. Here's the outcome. I hope we can fix it now by saying, passing this resolution, saying, we got duped. We're sorry to the folks there, and we hope. By the way, and in fairness, one of these, one of these organizations reached out and said, hey, you know, can you give us that information so we can get with these homeowners and all that stuff? Which is a little weird because all this stuff came from public record. And if they were really that concerned about this, they would have reached out to the consumer, not to me as a policymaker, because there was the threat of the program ending. I could go on and on and on about this. But while I go on and on and on about this, and not to be dramatic, but this is the outcome of it. I hope that, hope that we can fix that today.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to start this with, when I was in my 20s, I bought a few bridges. So, I was one of those ones that used to get easily duped into things. So, I don't know about the 50-year-old homeowners, Commissioner Smith. I'm thinking people will learn as they go forward. I don't like this plan for residential. I think it did have a lot of consequences because it trumps mortgages. But I've heard from some business owners, and they already have some things in place. So, I would consider removing this off residential and then working with the business community because obviously they were able to figure out what they can afford and can't afford as far as PACE. So, that's going to be my compromise on this today, sir. So, interested in hearing what you guys have, or if anybody had any comments towards that, if that were to be the moving forward motion.
Commissioner Tobias?
I hate when you come up with great ideas that I had not thought of. And, you know, I could not find, how are you, how are you, how are you going to, I'm only concerned about the church because I think the church may fall, how that would have fallen out of that. Is there a way that you can think, I'm not thinking about new construction. If big builders want to do this, I don't understand it. I'll look into it. But I'm right now more concerned with, as you said, but where would the church, where would the church fall into?
The churches, they have a board of, they have a board consistent typically of five or six families. And so, they're actually, you know, we're...
Are you insinuating I don't go to church?
No, sir. You came to me to church, with me to church. But they're not-for-profit corporations. So, I don't, I don't know what to do with that, even in some particular businesses. If you want to turn it off for all nonprofits, that'd be fine, too, because then you're running a risk of other people that give towards an entity that might not have a say in it. I'd be fine with doing not-for-profits, too, of removing it from them as well.
And Madam Chair, I couldn't find any large ones that were in default. So, for consumer protection, I think that's a, I would certainly support that.
You know, I don't like these anyway. So, yeah.
I just, I mean, I'll let Kurt Smith, I know you have your light on, and I'll just comment. I find it interesting that not a single PACE person is here from their companies. And that's very telling because, you know, it's one thing to be a little afraid of Commissioner Tobias and his threats of terrorism. I mean, I'm surprised nobody's here to defend it.
That one can never go away.
No, you will always be a threat of terrorism. That was, that was out there, John.
To your point, I just got this text that was sent to my office. Hello, Adrian, if you would please let Commissioner Smith know that we thought the meeting started at 5:00 PM like last week. We are all en route, but will not make it on time. I'm sorry for the confusion. So, they do know about it because I was wondering myself that they've reached out to my office, and they were telling my office, at least somebody was, that they've got some commercial uses.
So, you have one company that wants to come out and defend the PACE program? Because I doubt they're all rallying at a conference.
Yeah.
I am not, I am not happy with how this has turned out, and your numbers scare me a little more. I think it's sort of predatory lending. I mean, that's really what it is. And you could lose your home because of it. So...
Certainly looks like there's no oversight.
And now, if the legislature wants to come back and put some significant consumer protections, we can put it back in place for all I care. But as it stands right now, I think they're taking advantage of low income and poor people, like, not just low income, but maybe some elderly people. 100 and, what was that, 134,000 for impact windows? That's, that's not a mansion in that picture. You know what I mean? And that's a lot of money. It's double what my home costs. So...
Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you shop?
Well, I mean, these, oftentimes, these companies participate in PACE. So, they're already, they already have, you know...
So, where are you on the compromise, giving the commercial the ability?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with, because hopefully a commercial entity, you know, and if we run into a problem, we'll pull it from that. But until the legislature fixes this, I don't want anybody else to lose their house. I don't want anybody else to be taken advantage of.
Yeah, those numbers are crazy.
Yeah. So, I would support, like, repealing it for residential as well. You good with that? You good with that? Commissioner Tobias?
Okay, so, I move to adopt a attached resolution with the changes of it, help me here, only being residential?
So, you're going to terminate residential and nonprofit?
And, and nonprofit, because that covered churches?
Nonprofit companies from participation in PACE. That should do it.
That, that would be the motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll sec, second, each a second? Okay. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right.
Oh, we're done.
All right, and I, I had no cards on that either, which I found interesting, figured somebody would speak on it. We have no public comment cards, which is quite shocking. Mr. Abate?
I have no report.
Christine Chivrick?
Yes, ma'am, I do have a, I do have a report. On July 6th, we received the property appraiser's denial of the county's request for an agricultural classification at the Malabar Scrub Jay Sanctuary. We have 30 days to request an appeal from the Value Adjustment Board. In order to preserve the county's rights, I'm requesting direction on authority to appeal. The motion that I would request would be that the board grant authority to the county attorney's office to appeal the property appraiser's denial of the agricultural classification in order to preserve the county's rights, as well as authority to continue or abate as necessary, and the authority for the county manager to sign all actions related to the appeal.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Smith, and I'm sure we'll evaluate as we go along through the process.
Right, right. It gives the opportunity for the new county attorney, who's coming in to weigh in on the, on the process.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything else, Ms. Christie?
No, no, no more board report.
Okay. Rita Pritchett? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In February last year, I brought forward an initiative to change Section 2-247 of the Brevard County Code relating to the purchase or leasing of county-owned property. This change removed the requirement for a supermajority vote for such transactions. It was my intent at the time to change code relating only to sales and leases at or above market value, and to leave the supermajority requirement for nominal sales or leases. So, it's my intent to bring this back before the board at August 2nd meeting and make that correction. So, this would only get and be nominal amounts. Therefore, I would like to make a motion, direct staff to make any necessary advertisements or procedure, procedural steps necessary before the meeting, and to draft appropriate language to effectuate this change.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's the motion.
Did you get all that?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And finally, I think yesterday was, one, Ian Golden's birthday, so, happy birthday. It only would have been worse if today was his birthday and he had to sat, sit through this disaster, but just a great county employee that we have, who is extremely dedicated, and, happy birthday.
And he didn't even wear a loud jacket today. What's up with that?
I like that whole group back there. That's a good group. All right, is that it?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
No report.
All right, I have a few things, and it's not controversial and doesn't involve terrorism. You're never going to live that down, Commissioner Tobias. All right, so, with former Commissioner Lowburne being on the VAB, we need to make an official vote to appoint members, and I was directed, or at least advised, that we should make a motion to avoid, to appoint Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Pritchett to the Value Adjustment Board for the 2022 season with me as the alternate. So, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. See, that wasn't too hard. I think Commissioner Tobias is already the chair.
I think they made you chair.
No.
Yeah, they already made you chair.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
And also, too, I got Kenny Johnson, Councilman Kenny Johnson from the city of Palm Bay, reached out regarding sending a letter to DOT regarding, you know, request for funding for Malabar Road Widening. This is the letter that we, our office kind of came up with. It didn't ask for specific funding, more like, you know, that, acknowledging that it's one of our top-ranked projects and asking for support for DOT District Five, so.
Motion to-
Are you guys okay with me pushing this long? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I thought I had one more thing, but I don't. All right, I believe that that's it for this meeting. Any further business by the board? All right, thank you for your patience. Thank you, staff, for putting up with us, and for the audience, and I appreciate my fellow commissioners, even when we don't always agree, I think we always respect each other. So, with that, meaning is turned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during-